Good night, or good evening. Welcome to the Select Board meeting. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so my hope is to go air free from here on. And we'll start with any announcements. Stephen, if you have any.
Not tonight, Tom.
You're all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Mark?
Yeah, I was wondering if I could just ask that we add to the agenda somewhere down the list a brief discussion on the town manager performance review process, just so we can make sure we all understand what's going to happen. Based on there's a Supreme Judicial Court ruling, so we're all on the same page.
Okay.
Thanks.
So there's a new ruling. We've made some variations from what we did last year, but I think we'll be in good shape. But Devin, you and I will have to have a meeting prior to putting that in the agenda. Great.
Thanks.
And of course, the board knows that our section of this is due on the 12th, and we'll be getting the evaluations from the department heads by the end of the week, I believe, and then next week we'll distribute those to the board.
Yeah, I don't need them.
Well, you may not need them, but...
No, I mean, don't take me off the list because that doesn't impact my rating.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Okay.
But we'll distribute those because I think it's handy to look at those before we go too far. Okay. So, no other announcements. I guess we... I'm trying to get my glasses out of here.
Were you ready to adjourn? You were ready to adjourn again?
Yeah.
Were you asking for Select Board comments now or announcements?
Well, that's a good question. Let me just double check on the agenda.
It was just announcements so far.
Okay.
And we would now go to resident comments.
Okay.
And do we have any resident comments tonight? No, we don't. And then the next on the agenda is the annual board committee interviews. So we will move into those. We have almost 16 people to this evening. So we can, let's see where we're... Start here. And we'll start with the audit committee?
No, there was a request that we could do, just that handout.
Oh, okay.
Start with the Historic Commission?
So that David Martinelli wants to go first, so we will... Please join us. Sorry. So you're interested in the Historical Commission? Could you just give us your name and address?
Sure. Yeah, I'm Dave Martinelli, nine over Brook Lane. I've been on the Historic Commission for two years now, and I've enjoyed it. I'd like to re-up if I could.
Okay. And, you know, as an incumbent, what would you say has been some of the most enjoyable parts of being on the committee that you...
Well, it's a congenial group, and we work together well, so I would say, you know, the camaraderie.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any questions from anyone on the board? Okay. So we, I guess we'll just look forward to... Have you served? And it's a... The term is...
I think it's a three-year term.
Three-year term?
I was in a two-year partial term last time.
Okay. So, great. Well, if that sounds good to you, we'll get back to you. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
And also, we have Kerry Green-Greensman?
Greenman.
Greenman. All right. And you're here to talk about the Historic District Commission?
Yes.
All right. Just your name and address if you can start.
Yep, it's Kerry Greenman, 186 Linwood Drive, Long Meadow.
All right. And why is this committee important to you?
I'm a Realtor with William Ray's Real Estate, and when we first moved here nine years ago, I came kicking, screaming, did not want to move from Long Island. And when we drove in through Long Meadow, I quickly fell in love with it because of the green, and I'd really like to preserve its history, something that's interesting to me.
Okay. And, all right. Any questions from the board?
I just think, Tom, if I could, just a quick question about, you know, what you see the role of the Historic District Commission of relative... This past year, we had some discussions within the Historic District Commission about what it is. Are you looking at, I need to say this, any particular agenda or any particular way forward?
I have no agenda.
And I say that because most of the people who apply for that live in the district. They kind of have a personal issue at stake they're trying to maintain. I was just wondering if you had it.
I don't live in a district, and I think I only learned of this position through what's been going on the past few months.
Okay.
And I think I have fresh eyes and a fair sense, and I think I would be a good addition to this committee.
Thanks.
Okay. And, all right. And as a Realtor, do you have any views about how the commission, or how that district serves our community? I mean, do you have any opinion about that?
I think it's a huge draw to our community. Like I said, when I moved here, it was the first thing I fell in love with. I think it should stay pretty true to how it is, and it's going to be interesting for me, too, with my business, to learn, like, as I show properties, to know what they can and can't do if they buy there.
Okay. Great. Yes, Richard?
What are your viewpoints from a Realtor's standpoint, and of course, as somebody who's been here for X amount of years, about adaptive reuse of historic structures for even commercial purposes?
Are we talking about the Young Mansion?
No, I'm talking general.
Honestly, I haven't put that much thought into it yet. I think that, I think that, I think there could be a lot of benefit in a small... I'm not really sure, to be honest.
Based on your experience, are you seeing anything... If adaptive restoration is done appropriately, do you see anything negative from the real estate world that you've experienced?
I have not, no.
Okay.
It's only improvements.
Okay. Well, thank you, Kerry.
Thank you.
All right. Have a seat. So we have some other folks who'll be late, so we can move to the Audit Committee. Peter Landon, I saw the car with the "Wellfleet" sticker on the back. I knew you'd be here.
Environmental issues galore, "Wellfleet." The Pete Landon, five Middlebrook Road, Long Meadow. And going for the Audit Committee, I started there, and actually, I was the first Audit Chair in 2005 with the new charter. And where was the opinion of the committee that it would be good for the town to have an Audit Committee because of a million reasons. It's especially to a degree... I have just a couple of comments, if I could make them quickly, about the Audit Committee.
Yeah.
The comprehensive annual financial report that the town manager and the CFO have been promoting at town meetings, et cetera, was mostly the work of the Audit Committee, and particularly the statistical section at the back. And the reason I brought them along, I think, was 126 citizen volunteers, if I counted correctly, in boards and commissions, and in my opinion, these are training tools. We don't have an orientation for people, as to what the town, how it operates or functions. And the, if you were writing a curriculum at a college for how a town, open town meeting government works, this would be exhibit one and exhibit two for the instructor to develop a curriculum. So I know we're getting them out to anybody who is interested in a good read for an hour or two on each one of these. You'll understand the income expense. And one of the focuses of the Audit Committee these days is the balance sheet. When I first started getting involved with the Finance Committee and the Pension Task Force, and the, all our focus was on income and expense. And now with the debt levels of the town rising for good reason, the projects that are going on, and also the unfunded liabilities being forced on our balance sheet by accounting authorities, that the focus on the balance sheet is a major pivot that has been, always been the focus of the Audit Committee, but now its relevance is huge. So that's my comments. Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Well, you know, you had sent a document that talked about the History Audit Committee, an email, emailed everyone. That was really a handy tool. It was good to really get that perspective of how...
Mr. Welker, who's been key and instrumental, he's the Chair. He's really steeped well about this town and how it functions, and Paul Pastergi coaches him all the time when he's wrong.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Mark?
Yeah, Peter, a question about auditing things other than finance. We talk all the time about audits and finances, but I thought when the Audit Committee was originally set up, there was some concept that it would audit other things, like policies and procedures and things other than just the books of the town. Is there any kind of thought of that in terms of somebody looking over and saying, "Here are the things you're doing right. Here's the things you really ought to be doing differently?"
That's a good question. Mr. Chabelli was the Select Board at the time, and he, I remember, lectured me that we were to keep our nose in a narrow focus and stay the heck out of this and that. And we haven't gone over the policies, but we were involved in writing some policies. Was that on the Finance Committee or the Audit Committee? I got involved directly in working some, the current capital policies and the debt management policies. So I'll raise that as an agenda as we do our work plan. Actually, our next meeting, we're discussing our work plan for the year ahead. I'll get back to you.
Okay. That's fine.
Well, actually, in Ernie Welker's letter, he mentions about going to the Retirement Board and making some, you know, that our Audit Committee was the first Audit Committee that ever went to one of those...
That's a good point. That was an outreach, and we continue to do that. There's some issues now. Paul and I were working today to catch up with where the annuity, the reporting of, at the Hampton County Retirement Board is, and to... We also look at the OPEB and the footnotes on the balance sheet. Financial notes are constructed partially by us and partially by the accounting firm, and those reports are, you know, and also the Lower Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. We looked in that, as Mr. Welker pointed out in their report, for contingent liabilities, and unfortunately, found one. It wasn't huge, but, you know, some exposure we have with our third-party arrangements.
Yeah, but it just shows how, you know, our committee has really contributed to the whole area, you know? When you look at the Retirement Board, if we make suggestions that improves their rate of return, you know, that we're providing leadership...
We recommended they move the investments to us and others. We recommended the task force on pension to the state because there was a 200 basis performance return deficit with the Hampton County Retirement Board operating. Right now, they still run the administrative part of that operation.
Yeah. Well, that was good to read. Thank you for sharing that. And Richard, yes?
Do you think, do you think the current oversight is adequate, or do you think that they should have more oversight?
I think it's adequate. You know, I think the controls have been improved. I think this accounting firm and the ones we... We had one that was an aberration, as you know. He came over to help us straighten out the shop once. The, I think they're adequate, and they're comprehensive, and they go deep enough. Paul, I don't know if you concur with that?
Yeah. I mean, without, you know, there's a cost-benefit analysis there. You know, unless you're going to hire someone, you hire somebody full-time, I don't think you're going to reap many benefits of hiring another employee to do internal auditing for you.
Yeah. The state laws allow so many things, you know? It's like...
Actually, I'm referring to...
You can't talk to your labor union with the open meeting rules, you know?
I'm referring to the position that you're applying for, not our contractual services. On the Audit Committee, do you think they have adequate overview, or should they have additional overview?
I think they have it.
Okay. Because I'm not talking about the contract services part. I'm talking about the Audit Committee part.
Oh, well, I think the key is the qualifications of the individuals, and I think that spelling out and the job description, the background you need, and you get, we now have, as I mentioned, a new young lady, new CPA, and also, she's a millennial, so I mean, we've got to really hit here to get women involved and to get a highly professional person. We got a young, new attorney to a town. I think his wife is a physician, came to the area, and he has a tremendous commercial background. So those individuals are able to ask the key questions, and, but we don't do outreach. We don't do the kinds of things that the question was. All done by the professionals. We don't walk into and look at the books, per se, of anybody, and...
And Peter, you're applying for the three-year term?
Mr. preferred to gave Mr. Welker and I the opportunity, there's a one and a three year, that we could talk about it on the side. Is that all right? And get back with who's one and who's three?
They're actually, they both applied for the one-year voting member.
He's the chairman. I lose.
Tom, move aside.
Okay. All right. Well, great. Okay, thank you. So, Debbie's open to either position, and we'll talk it over. All right. The Building Committee?
Tom, there's some people...
Yes?
The Historic District Committee? I remember it was supposed to be here. The one that was over here?
The...
He just took one out of order.
Historic District.
Yeah, you took the one out of order.
I took one out of the order?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because he had to go quickly.
He had to leave for work.
Okay. All right. So I don't see that on his list, but, is this Tim Summers?
He took one out of order. He had to leave for work. He hasn't got to take all the others.
Yeah.
We didn't forget you. The answer is, we didn't forget you.
We didn't forget you. I have an agenda here that goes audit, in alphabetical order, audit, building, capital, community council, historic. So the next Building Committee would be Bill Durkin, who's an incumbent. Just introduce yourself.
Hi. Bill Durkin, 196 West Road.
Okay. And you're an incumbent, and how have you enjoyed your role on the Building Committee? And what kind of contributions do you feel you've been good about making to us or happy about making?
Since it's my first time on a city board, it's different. I come from the nonprofit world, so it's a little bit different. So it's a learning process, especially when it comes to the bidding process, building, et cetera. So I've enjoyed myself, and I'm learning. I try to be quiet because, you know, when I see, the, one thing I think about is the pricing that, for buildings, for state and federal funds that are available, it's extremely higher than in the private or nonprofit world. So that's something to get used to.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, yeah.
It would be helpful, what he was talking about, those two reports, the audit reports, to be able to look at those and see that information, because you come on a board and you don't really understand the process. So you might make a comment, and then you're told that, no, that doesn't work that way. It works this way.
Yeah.
They're actually both online, if you want them, under the Finance Department page, the town website. I have a few hard comments.
Okay. Well, before, so the, you know, in terms of the cost of buildings and so forth, I guess part of it is the state, you know, of course, wants to pay people living wage, and there's a lot of union negotiations. Once a project is over a certain price point, so it becomes union, and that's a big difference. Yeah. Whereas when you're on your own business, you know, you get your Uncle Fred to come over and build it, you know?
There's a few other extra costs involved in federal or state-run projects.
All right. Thank you. All right. Mark?
Yeah, Bill, the Building Committee's got some important things coming up, not the least of which is, we just broke ground Friday on our multimillion-dollar DPW building. The experience we have is that, you know, you're not, we didn't, it's unlikely that the plans that we sent to the architect and the contractor are going to go up without an issue or two or three or more. And I guess the question is, what do you see as the Building Committee's role in participating in those discussions? Be they change orders, or program changes, or cost overrun approvals or recommendations, or whatever it is? How do you see the Building Committee participating in those?
That's an interesting question. I mean, we discussed that at last week's meeting and set thresholds for our involvement in those change orders. You know, the first, what was it, Steve? I can't remember. Was it the first $10,000 or $20,000?
I don't remember. It was something like that.
It was like $20,000 was the town manager and the department heads, and from there to 50, then our involvement got in there. And then above that, I think it was going to come all the way back to the Select, if it started to get up to $100,000 or more. You know, it's kind of strange, because, as I said, I'm from the nonprofit world. I was actually the vice president of facilities. So I was the town reporting to the board. And so the board is kind of an oversight, overview, not so much involved in the actual construction work. We would have a board member on a committee, a subcommittee that would come to the meetings about change orders, and that's how that input was put in. But to actually get involved in day-to-day or week-to-week construction meetings, it's kind of for the town employees to do. So I question how involved...
Well, my understanding, at least I'll speak for myself, of the Building Committee was to be the oversight of construction as well as other roles in terms of determining, you know, what project we take, what projects we don't. But, you know, we were basing, I was basing it, at least, and I won't speak for others, I was basing it on the model of the School Building Committee, which, you know, it has a whole different role because it's...
It's totally different.
It's set by statute of the state, but nevertheless, you know, they oversaw the project. And, you know, I believe in civilian review. Personally, I believe that there ought to be some involvement in the School Building Committee. You know, what that involvement is, is I'm not sure we know yet, but that's why I'm trying to ask that question. I think...
We did assign...
Very early in this project, we need to agree as an organization, and I don't know who that is, but I think it's town manager, I think it's the Building Committee, but I think ultimately, since the financial fiduciary responsibility for that building falls to the Select Board, it comes back to the Select Board. So, you know, I think it'd be interesting to see the members' opinions of how we're managing those programs, you know? And, you know, I'm not expecting a daily oversight because you folks are volunteers. I mean, that's what we pay the, our building...
But one thing I did, let me finish. We did form a, let's call it a subcommittee. Two of the members will be part of the discussions of change orders.
Yeah, the thresholds were a certain level. We do it administratively. The next level is the subcommittee.
Right.
And then the third level is the permanent building committee, and they would just make recommendations on what to do. It's an advisory committee. It's not like the...
Advisory to?
The town manager's like that.
Oh, okay.
It's not, it's not like the MSBA.
Right, right. And the MSBA, the School Building Committee, the Mass School Building Committee, gives total authority to the School Building Committee. They can, you know, spend money, they can spend up to whatever was authorized, and... Right.
You also had existing structures that you were rehabbing, so that changed a lot of things.
Right. But, you know, there hasn't been a construction project in the world that hasn't gone on without some glitch, whether you're digging the foundation, you hit a rock, or you, something else. I just, that was my question. You answered it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
No, I've been involved in over $100 million worth of construction in my career, you know? So I see the value of oversight, but I also see the value, or the value of stepping back when you're in an overview/oversight position.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Richard, did you still have a question?
No, don't have a thing.
Okay.
Maybe, because this is a different group. We ought to point out to everybody here tonight that by statute, we have to wait a minimum of seven days to make any appointments, and we can't wait as long as, I think...
Ninety.
Ninety days. But we're trying to get all the interviews in before we make any appointments. So you won't hear anything tonight. You may not hear from us for a little while.
That's fine.
But keep attending the meeting.
But don't, but yeah, don't send a sleepover.
I'm still breathing. You said something about my, I'm still breathing. You'll take me.
All right. Thank you, Bill.
Right. But I am interested in the three-year term.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Good evening. Capital Planning Committee, Peter Vinesh.
Vinesh.
Vinesh. He was an incumbent. He's just, name and address, and tell us your name and address and what your interest is in continuing.
One Homestead Boulevard, Long Meadow.
All right. And so you've been on the Committee, Capital Planning Committee, and, you know, you've obviously reviewed a lot of requests for funding, and what have you enjoyed about being as a member of that Committee?
I enjoy the process and the people that I work with, and I want to do my part to help with my community.
Okay. And are you excited about any of the projects that are happening in town, or specifically, or...
I wouldn't say excited, but I think it's good that we do have some ongoing projects.
All right. Good. Any questions from our members of the board? Okay. Well, we'll let you know, but thank you for agreeing, and it is a, there's two three-year terms. Will you go for a three-year term? Okay. All right. Well, thank you for coming by.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And Community Preservation Committee, Arlene Miller.
Good evening.
Yeah?
Arlene Miller, 68, East Greenwich Road. And I'm applying for a three-year term on the Community Preservation Committee, where I'm currently the vice chair of that Committee. In preparation for this, I just went back and looked just for your information over a couple of our statistics from that Committee, which you may know was created in Long Meadow in 2006. The state created, adopted the Community Preservation Act earlier in 2000. It took us a couple of years to join that movement, and we did in 2006, voting to have a 1% surcharge on our taxes to help fund our portion of the money for the community preservation projects. And when we first joined it, it was 100% match from the state, and it's now down to, in 2018, it was down to 17%, and I think this year it might be lower than that. It was interesting to me to look back and see that, to date, we've approved 66 projects with the community preservation money in Long Meadow, and we have received from the local surcharge over $3 million, and from the state, over $1 million, too. So we've put quite a bit of money back into the town from this effort, and as you know, we can only use this money on historic preservation, housing, open space, and recreation. So it's interesting, as the money pot is going down, or the demand from Long Meadow seems to be going up, especially since they opened up the process to include recreation projects, which is, seems to be never-ending in Long Meadow. But historic preservation and recreation projects have been very popular, and I think the money's been put to good use in the community. So it's a great Committee. I've really enjoyed working on it. I think we work well together. We've tried very hard to work with the town departments, the capital planning, finance, and you folks, so we coordinate, and that's my spiel.
We have any questions? No?
I guess I could play devil's advocate on state funding, but that's not the, that's not why we're here tonight, because we're here just to talk about some of the projects. Charlie, one of the questions that I've been asking everybody all along is the impact of, or the, not impact, but the decision by state Supreme Court on investing in, I think it's churches, religious kind of things, using local money. You have any thoughts or just comments on that at all?
Well, it's a church and state separation thing. It's very confused, it's a very complicated decision. As Stephen Weiss would say, it's, you know, it's a 25, 30, 40, 50, I don't remember, page decision. And we, as a group, had not, to date, even though we had requests from religious institutions, at least on three or four occasions that I can recall... at least on three, three or four occasions that I can recall, to fund some historic-related projects. We had not gone that route for various reasons. Not that they, according to our guidelines, didn't necessarily meet the criteria. You know, personally, I, I'm not a lawyer, so I can't delve into that. But again, it's historic preservation that we're looking at with these institutions, not building up the religious, it's not the religiosity, it's the buildings. So you have to be able to separate that in order to, you can give money to those if you can separate that. But it's very difficult to separate that according to the opinion. So as a group, we've stayed away from it, because we didn't want the town to get sued. Does that help?
No.
It's complicated, and-
I know what you're saying. Thank you, that's fine.
Okay, and then, you know, like, we've just had Long Meadow Days, which is, we like to think of that as a historical gathering on the green, you know, which is a nice thing to do.
Very, very nice.
We don't do it very often. Is there other historical sort of things that would happen in town that the committee ever looks at? Like, I know in Turner Park, there was, I don't know if it was a Turnvrain, or a Schustenvrain, or whatever, and people would have, do a lot of stuff on the lake there. Would your committee look into those sort of historical events through the past?
Yeah, I don't think under the guidelines on how we, and how that money can be spent, not how we can spend it, but how that money, how the town can spend that money are very strict. And it's really the preservation of stuff, not an event.
Okay.
So in other words, and even when we were building, we were giving some money to, the recreation money, to Stropeville Field, and wanting to help reconstruct the field, the house, what do you call it? The Doug House, or it wasn't the Doug House. It was, it was where they sell refreshments and things. There were certain aspects of that building we could fund, and other aspects we could not fund. So it's very, guidelines are quite strict about how you can spend that money. And I'm certain we cannot fund an event.
Okay, no, because there was a structure there at one time, but I just-
Well, to redo the structure, there's a different issue than to fund the event. I thought you were meaning to-
Well, I just, you know, in terms of looking at it as a part of our town's history, and what was happening there. I know people grew up in town, would always say they remember.
I've heard wonderful stories about the beer garden at Turner Park. Wasn't it a beer garden?
A beer garden sounds good to me, but-
I think that's what it was. I think it was a beer garden.
That might, yeah.
Is that right?
Yep. Well, I know that there were dances Saturday night.
Sure.
It was a pretty popular place.
Sure. Now, could you reconstruct a building that was historic and you had plans for? Possibly. Can we improve the trails and some of the landscape of Turner Park? Probably. We're now, we're looking at a major project at Wolf Swamp Fields. I mean, that's a big project. You ought, you know, I just received a message from the state coalition, the CPC coalition, that our tennis courts are featured on their website. The project we did with the community preservation money for the, recreation money for the Blinn Tennis Courts. So that's, that was a big investment. And this money helped get it over the top, as you would say. So it's done a lot, done a lot of the buildings, the town buildings along, in the, on the green, that are historic, Center School, Community House, Town Hall.
Library.
Library, we're still working on the library. So I think it's, I think it's, I really believe in the process. I believe in the fact that this, these kinds of projects would get set aside, would not get attention, would not get town money, given the priorities of spending in the community. But having this special fund for these types of projects make it possible to get, get these done, so.
Well, thank you for your willingness to continue, yes?
It's not a question, it's more of a comment. I just, because you've been on the committee, you're gonna continue on the committee, I suspect. But I just wanted to express my concern about a couple of things that have, over the years, that we've ended up with what I'll call multi-phase projects. But, and I'm not too worried about a project that's, for example, Turner Park, that said, you know, over five years, we're gonna do these five projects in a little bit every year. I think the ones, the, obviously, the one that stands out is the, is the Blinn Tennis Court, that we appropriated, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, and then came back, no, it's not gonna be that. We'll hold that, and we'll appropriate a little bit more, and we'll appropriate a little bit more. And finally, we accumulated enough money to do the project. And I think that, to some degree, I personally see that as being, you know, not being true to the people in the town of Long Meadow, saying, hey, folks, this project is actually gonna cost you three hundred thousand dollars. Although, my sense is that community preservation doesn't know it's gonna cost three hundred thousand dollars at the time they fund the first hundred thousand dollars of it. And only at some point do they find out, well, you know, I've already put aside two hundred thousand dollars, what's another fifty thousand dollars, when in fact, the question is, would you put away three hundred thousand dollars for the project to begin with? And all I do is, I don't know, caution the community preservation committee to take a look at projects that, for what the total cost is, and not how much it is to put money aside this year and pick up a little bit more next year. And I know there've been, I'm just gonna say, two or three projects, and there haven't been a lot.
There have, there have been.
There've been a few projects that have come out like that, that, you know, I just hate going back to town hall, town meeting and saying, we need fifty thousand dollars. Oh, yeah, we were here last year for seventy-five, and the year before for seventy-five, but, you know, the overall project.
Some of that is because these applications are due in December, as you know. We do a review in December, January, and we have to get everything to you for the warrant in February. So the quotes are loosey-goosey that the folks give when they put in their proposals. They're not loosey, I mean, they do due diligence, but they're as best as they can have it. And in November, November, essentially, before town meeting in May. And by the time things go out to bid, that sometimes does legitimately change, as you might know. So some of that's legitimate. Some of it, like the Wolf Swamp Road Fields, frankly, we anticipate to do that project correctly, it's gonna be about a million dollars to the town. So we know it's gonna be step by step by step. And we are conscious that this year, we can only afford a hundred thousand.
But that's very different from-
Yeah, and I just wondered.
The library, or the Blinn Courts, where we came in and we said, we think we're doing it all. And in fact, turns out, we couldn't. And for just the reason you said-
Right.
That the price was much higher than we originally anticipated.
And I think we're doing a little bit better in terms of getting the price right the first time. But so noted.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Arlene.
You're welcome.
All right.
Tom, I gotta mention something. You know the one, what Arlene was finishing up to? The one thing that bothers me, what she said, say, on Wolf Swamp Fields, is that even if it's a multi-phase project, and you're dumping in a hundred thousand dollar increments for a long, it's up to a million dollar project. And to me, there just, it just looks like there's something a little bit wrong with that policy. Not, not for capital or anything, just the fact that we've trickled up to a million dollars being spent in our community without a total review of it. Talk about scope creep in its finest definition. I mean, it's a classic. Because I complained against the Wolf Swamp Field, because there's no plans. Nobody could give me outside of plans. And I said, if you don't spend a million dollars, you better have plans. And I'm not talking about, we wanna do this, I'm talking about concrete plans. We know how much it costs to do a field, so I was against it. And that was my, and I'm still against that type of spending. I don't like it. It's not really programmatic, it's, it's some other word I don't even think we can say, say on air. But I don't, I don't like that. And Mark tiptoed around a little bit, and we've seen more than one project go that way, where this, and not so much just with you guys, with other phases. I mean, we've, I, Blinn Tennis Courts started out at an eighty-nine thousand dollar project, and it ended up as a million dollar project. And I watched that thing grow. And every year it grew, it grew more, and we didn't spend any money. And it was almost like, you could be, you could be a nasty person, say, somebody was playing with the system. Because if they weren't, if they didn't bring the full project in, and say it's gonna cost a million dollars, why in three years did it creep up to that? It's a lack of planning. And I think that's what it, to me, it echoes. And, and we had some fantastic people like yourself serving on these committees, and we know where your heart and soul is. But we end up with these things, it's like the information flow isn't right, as we build projects. Okay.
All right, thank you.
I feel better.
All right. Well, we have reached the next level of the Historic District Commission, and we have a number of people, so I'd like them to come up two at a time. And if we could start with Paul Caliento and Brett Lukazik? Oh, three, okay. So, well, we will, all right, so we'll-
Carrie did one.
No, we already did Carrie, then we have two more.
Yeah, we did Carrie. Yeah, two more.
Tim's not here. Just, just-
Oh, they have to cancel. Do you think I should have all three come up at the same time?
No, you only have two left.
Yes. Why don't you, why don't you join us and pull another chair up? Thank you. And you are Melissa McDonough. Okay, so, so we will cover all of, all three of you. And if you could just introduce yourself, and just tell us what, there's different terms. There's a two-year, there's two three-year alternate terms. There's one three-year alternate term, and then there's three, three-year terms. So if you could just give your name, and your address, and which one you're interested in. Ladies first.
Okay, thank you. My name is Melissa McDonough. I live at thirty-eight York Drive. I've lived in town since two thousand and two, and became very interested in the history on the green when my son was in third grade, and I was a Cub Scout leader for five years, as you all know. And my, I said to my husband, you know, once I'm done with Cub Scouts, I'd like to join the Historic Commission. I'd like to take more interest in the town. So that's my reason for my application. And I'd be happy to serve on any of the terms where you need someone. I don't have a preference. I have a full-time job at Mass Mutual, so I have plenty to do.
All right.
So wherever needed is, I'm happy to do.
All right, thank you, Melissa. And next to you.
My name is Brett Lukazik. I'm at thirty-eight Crescent Road, which is right near the Historic District, although not in it. And I've, we've been here about five years. And we're attracted by the Historic District, just the way it was set up, the way you can walk up and down. And I just find it very pleasant, and I'd like to help in maintaining it. I've been through several, I love old houses. And I've been through several of them, redoing them, just on my own. You know, and hiring contractors to work with me and that sort of thing. So I know a lot about what's involved, and I'd like to help people that are in that process, if I can. I'd like to go through, I have enough time where I can help out with a three-year, you know, regular, what do they call it, this? Term, yeah.
Yeah.
Be more than happy to do that. I guess that's about it.
Well, that's, we'll ask you more questions then. Brett, thanks. And then, Paul?
Hi, my name is Paul Calento. I'm at forty Wilken Drive. And this is the second time I've been here before you. The first was actually to speak in advocacy for the Brewer Young Mansion, going back. And in fact, that was really the first time I ever heard the Historic District Commission ever uttered. And since then, you know, being an entrepreneur, and basically reporting to boards, essentially, as I build businesses and eventually sell them, the one thing I think that I'm really concerned with is that this is a committee without a budget. The budget is the budget of the homeowners that live in that Historic Commission. And I think that the role of the committee is different than many of the other committees, because it's not necessarily to spend money, but to support the homeowners. And as mentioned through all the discussion around that house, not only does that have to be done well, but that district needs to evolve. And it's going to evolve, the postcard of our town is going to be evolved, based on assisting those homeowners to be successful, and the policies around which need to evolve in order to make that happen. I'm not advocating, by the way, a change in zoning or anything of that nature, but rather just an openness to look at, you know, how we can, may help the homeowners, like the sixty-some odd homeowners, make this work.
Okay, thank you, Paul. I don't know if there's any questions, yeah?
Just a quick comment. I just find often that people at home, or maybe watching this, are confused by the difference between the Historic District Commission, the Historic Commission, and the Historic Society. And I just want to make sure people understand there are three separate, distinct, you know, groups. And the Historic District Commission, as Paul eloquently said, is responsible for maintaining the character, for lack of a better word, of particular homes that fall into the particularly designated Historical District of the town of Long Meadow. And they have a responsibility to do that, which is different from the Historic Commission, who works on historical Long Meadow as a general town. And the Historic Society, which is a private, not-for-profit, that does things like, you know, runs Long Meadow Days and a few other things. But I just think it's important for people to know the difference, because there is a way for people to contribute to maintaining the historical nature of Long Meadow in three different ways. And it's not always the district. And that's one of the reasons I've asked the earlier applicant about, you know, if you don't live in the district, you know, why, why are you applying? Because most people, like I think, as Paul indicated, they, you know, they're homeowners. They, they wanna make sure that it's their money, so they get a voice in it. And so I guess I'm gonna ask each of you, because I don't believe that, I don't know if any of you live in the district, but what, you know, what it is you're trying to help preserve, as Paul said, with the homeowner's money?
I'll start. So I live one block back from the district, and I walked my son to Center School most days. And I just love the way that the ground, that the green itself, the grounds have been preserved. My neighbor, very close friend, grew up in the red house, little, little red house that has been completely renovated because of the giant tree that fell onto it last year. So I just have an interest in keeping the green looking the way that it is now, because I think that the history is important to this town. And it's, these houses have been there for so long. It's just a nice compliment to the town of Long Meadow.
I think we're, I'm in the same way. I'm on the block on the other side. And it basically, I consider it my neighborhood. You know, we, we go up and down there all the time. I walk up to the library. I think it's important to make, to keep it going. And I think keeping it going isn't just keeping everything the same way when people can't keep up their houses. I think you have to think about that, as well as just, you know, keeping the way it looks. So I'm not up for commercialization of the place. But I think, you know, we need to help people there, because I see those town, those houses, every day when I walk by, a lot of them are sitting there for years, for sale. And I think these antique houses are, they're hard to maintain. Particularly with the way the paint situation is now, where the stuff doesn't last for more than five years. You know, I, you know, it's great ecologically to have all this eco-friendly paint. But if it, if you have to repaint it every five years, it's kind of useless, because you're just still putting the same stuff in the ground. And I don't know what you do with that. I'd like to find out. But I think that's, there's some really hard issues coming up as far as that district. And I'm concerned, and I'm right next to it, and I'd like to be involved.
I think one of the things about this town is real estate. And we have a historic district of sixty-one houses that really is the epicenter of the town, regardless of where we live. I live close to the high school. My house does not look like historic. I wish it was, and I wish it had the character. But all of us drive in and out of town going around that. And it really is, the success of that area leads to the success of the rest of the town. And given the fact that we are so heavy on residential for our tax base, we really need that area to really continue to be the shining light of the town as we go in and out, because that's the decision. That's what people see in addition to the schools. That's, that's what they see when they make the decision to move to Long Meadow.
Tom, if I can just follow up, one of the reasons I asked the question also is, way back, we went, undertook a renovation of Center School. And because it is in the Historic District, we spent an awful lot of money on historically proper wooden windows that lasted, I think, seven or nine years, or ten years, Arlene? Thank you. And then we went back, and by the time we went back to it, the Historic District Commission had finally approved, I think it was a vinyl-clad window that, or an aluminum-clad window that met the historic, you get, you get the picture. The point is, the Historic Commission, the Historic District Commission holds a lot of sway over, not just the individual houses, but sometimes what we hear in town, town do as well. And I just wish we didn't end up replacing those windows twice in, in my career.
I love Center School. My, my kids went to it. It was just, it's such a nice job. I have to commend the town on doing that. It was one of the best things I saw when I was there.
Some of us lived through the getting there.
I know, I've heard, I've heard stories.
Some of us went there. I was picking up on, I thought, two different statements when I was listening to each of you respond. I'd like to ask you, are you concerned about the preservation of the structure and the environment, or the preservation of the ownership? I'd like each of you to respond to that. I'd like each of you to respond to that.
I would say the structure and the environment. I mean, I'm all for helping the owners.
But I mean, you made, you made it very specific, you talked about commercialization.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not in particular involved with that. I've, you know, would I totally exit out, you know, maybe a couple of places like that? With a house, you know, the houses, you know, the post office, there was a commercial post office at one point. But I would really be prejudiced against it. I don't think that, I don't want to see, I lived in New Jersey for 25 years and I saw places of just beautiful old houses turn into junk because of...
Well, you've also got Williamsburg too, that's a key example of very successful restoration programs that are beautiful.
That's not, that's in, that's in Virginia.
Yeah, well, I mean, it doesn't matter where it is.
Yeah, okay.
It's all over the country.
But that also had the Rockefellers.
Preserve, well, preservation.
It's a little different.
I guess my core thing was, are you interested in current ownership or the structure preservation environment? Because I think we all understand, there will be a given point, that historic structures will test anybody's budgets to the point that they may have to sell because they cannot maintain.
Yeah.
And it's very difficult to attract a buyer, a residential buyer into a, a large money pit. And that's, that's the question that is looming before our community and it's going to get worse instead of better.
Yes.
And it also, this is not just this little strip here, it's also the other core features of our town. There's, there's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of homes that are very close to be in the same age, that aren't, happen to be core.
Yeah.
You know, we got them up and down Long Meadow Street, 1873, they're all over the place. So it's not just here, it's just that we've identified these.
I owned it 1912.
Right. Well, that's a new one.
Yeah, and I've had two of them already. I mean, I know those structures, I can go in there and I can find them, you know, find a way to, how they built them.
So I think you're looking at the management of the whole thing and I'm, I'm concerned standing here that we have a committee that is neutral enough or balanced enough that they're going to weigh all factors. I mean, that's all, that's been my concern because we've had a flood of people come in for this particular committee at this time. And it was all because, I think, because of the Young Estate.
Right.
So as a select board member, I'm very, very concerned when I see this much activity coming up all of a sudden and I'm saying, okay, which way is this activity running? Is it for the preservation or is it for the, it's not ever going to happen again in my backyard?
Well, I'd say I'm not the backyard guy. I definitely for the preservation. But I would hate to see somebody kicked out of their house. I mean, I'm not going to say I'm not going to help, want to help the people, but I think, you know, we as a town have to have priorities. And I would like to see the town maintain the structure, yes.
I would as well. I think though, as we move forward, we need to be reasonable with the window example that you gave with Center School. So explore all avenues as opposed to, you know, this is the only choice so that we can preserve the green as it is today and as we've seen it for years.
Mr. Foster, I think that we, you know, be the committee for the town, we do represent the people that are in that town and I think to some extent, any committee that's in a role like this needs to also ascertain, can these people maintain these houses and are the policies in place to meet the spirit? One of the things, if you look at some of the areas as they relate to materials and so forth, there are some reasonable things over time that can be looked at that can reduce maintenance costs, eliminate the multiple window issue and so forth. I don't think it's anything that necessarily is a rush to judgment, but I think we do got to look at total cost of ownership of these homes with an eye for letting people that live in them continue to live in them.
I have to say, my, my brother's an ar, head of archaeology down in Delaware and he does this kind of stuff all the time and I hear all the stories from him and he will be a good resource for me to go down and talk to and, you know, maybe I can find some alternatives if, you know, if that's helpful.
All right, great. Well, thank you. I, you know, I have to thank everyone who applied for this committee, there's a lot of people and we've had to ask more questions than people usually get, you know, usually your, your first time up, they ask you a few things and then it's, it's over, but, so we appreciate your patience with, with our committee and all the other people who've applied. And we have one more person who, Mr. Summers, Tim Summers, will probably be meeting with us also. So we will let you know as we make our decisions, we'll probably have to have a vote on it in, in one of these meetings, but thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
All right.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay. I guess we can go to...
Mary Beth Bergeron.
Mary Beth Bergeron, Council of Aging is, is here. So you might as well step up, we've, we've got most everybody else. Can you just introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Mary Beth Bergeron, live at 497 Inverness Lane.
All right. And you're interested in the Council of Aging, that's a surprise, no?
Isn't it a surprise? Well, obviously, Tom, I've been on the board for a number of years, I want to, I'm not sure, maybe six, nine years, I'm not sure, but obviously I'm interested in, I'm interested in the Council on Aging and the work that it does within our community for our elder residents and in particular the frail and elderly.
Yeah, well, it's, you know, after all the work you've done, you know, hopefully you'll, after the vote on the 12th, you'll have a great year being on this committee again. We, you know, I can't imagine anyone here would not want to put you back on it, but...
Well, maybe, maybe, maybe Mr. Foster.
Well, nobody's going to speak for everybody. You speak for yourself, Tom, right?
That's right.
Any questions?
Your vote counts, Richard.
I know it does. And I preserve the right to have a vote instead of a guy trying to vote for everybody. So what, what can you help us on there? You've been on there a while, where are we going?
I think that the Council on Aging has begun to recognize that there is a change in the attitude towards retirement and that the younger retirees are seeking more, a more active retirement, specifically in the area of fitness and learning and later life opportunities. I know I've been working with Jim Ladin along with the committee to begin to offer some of those programs specifically in the evening because there is a limited space at the existing facility, to appeal to that younger retiree, the sixty-five, sixty-two, sixty-five, seventy-year-old. I mean, most people who are today who are 75 consider themselves a younger retiree and they're interested in learning, like I said, learning in later life opportunities as well as fitness. And the current facility, as you know, doesn't really offer the space to offer those things. So I think that we have a great future in front of us to service not only the frail elderly in terms of social services and nutrition and those programs that are currently in place, but also great growth opportunity to provide those services that the younger retiree is looking for.
Okay.
The younger, more, and, and, you know, some people can be 85 and be very active and, and seeking those opportunities as well. But there's certainly a movement within the country that baby boomers will change how people retire. They want to be more active, more engaged, they want to volunteer, they want to be part of the community.
Good.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Foster?
Completely.
Good.
Are we looking at any kind of Woodstock-type festivals?
That would be wonderful. If we get the new building, we're going to be able to seat a lot of people in the multipurpose room, there'll be a stage to perform both inside and out and you'll be one of the first invitees to sing, Mr. Lisa.
Yeah, I was thinking Crosby, Stills, Nash and...
Oh, that would be good too. We could, we could send them an invitation. That would be, that would be a fee-based event, however.
Okay, well, a lot of the people from Woodstock are still in the community and some of them are still performing.
I know.
I was there.
And he was there. All right. Any other questions? All right, Mary Beth, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So I don't see, I don't believe Margaret Cohen's here, so if we could ask David Horowitz to step up for Parks and Recreation Commission?
That's a tough act to follow. Dave Horowitz, 18 Circle Road. I'm a two-term park commissioner, spent the last term chairing the commission, hoping you'll find in your hearts that it'll give me another three years. I'm pretty excited about some of the synergies that the Council on Aging has with what we've been doing. We'll see what happens on the 12th, assuming that's a good thing. We're going to try to promote even more synergy with that facility. I think we can get some efficiencies, I think you've heard me talk again and again during these interviews about trying to find efficiencies. I've used the baseball example multiple times because it's near and dear to my heart, but Long Meadow Baseball Association and Long Meadow Little League have done a great job communicating, working together, and actually expanding. In preparation for this, I talked to a few of the folks, there's actually four additional teams playing on the 90-foot diamond in Long Meadow, which is the first time that's happened in a long time. So, you know, we need those efficiencies, Barry Jarvis only has so much time on our hands, we need those efficiencies to make the fields work for us. I was going to comment on Wolf Swamp, but in deference to Mr. Foster, I think I'll leave that off the table for a moment and just bring up the fact that, again, the synergy on the adult center and the efficiencies relative to the fields that we have.
I actually do want to talk about Wolf Swamp. You know, Richard's been through this, obviously, but is, is there a plan? I mean, I've seen a plan where there's three different kind of renditions, but at some point you'll pick that and then there'll be a plan going forward. I know it's been kind of piecemeal and I understand the field is awful, but...
So really three things Wolf Swamp really needs. First and foremost is, is safety. From a traffic perspective, evolved driven by when there's been jamborees, we'd love to host that as a community, it's great, we've got enough space to do it. Dr. Elfman's been kind enough to let us park on his property when we can do it, but from a safety perspective, egress in and out, not, not the best and we can definitely improve that. From an irrigation perspective, if we don't water the thing, it's never going to, never going to come to life. And that's why by definition, we have to have a staggered, staged, phased approach. Mr. Crane's supported that, provided us with a couple of examples from some of the engineering folks. We've reviewed them, we've given our comments, and we actually have a subgroup headed by Margaret Racus to talk about what would be the best way to, to handle that Wolf Swamp phased project. It's going to be a big project. It isn't going to be a nickel and dime to get you there, we need to have a planned approach. Just the irrigation systems alone, think about how long it took us to get this field, this great field in front of the high school playable, you know, it's not going to happen overnight. So there needs to be a plan, needs to be a phased approach, and there's going to be a cost to it.
Is the well and irrigation being done this year?
That's phase one, my understanding. It's, excuse me, it's funded through CPC. It's, it's the obvious starting point, if you don't have the water, we're not going anywhere. So again, it's step one of probably a four or five-step process, frankly. And we've got to set expectations there. You know, those jamborees that fill up that entire field have to recognize on an annual basis for probably three to four or five years, you're going to be losing 20% of those fields as we move through to upgrade them. But in the end, I think you'll have a world-class facility much like the tennis courts.
I'd just like to step back a little. What is the role of the Parks and Recreation, you know, committee in developing, approving, commenting, whatever, with, with the plan relative to the professional staff of the Parks and Recreation Department?
So, Mr. Elf, I spent the first three years on the commission, asking those exact questions.
And you, and you learned?
I learned that we're influencers. I learned that we get a pulse of the community. I mean, if anything, between my experience on the building committee with what we did at Wolf Swamp at first and then what happened at Bliss, I learned a lot about what this community wants, what it needs, what it, what it, what it views as is important. And I think it's pretty key that the park commissioner are influencers. We want to get as many of these volunteer folks in the right place at the right time. Going back to what Arlene talked about earlier, you know, the beauty of the CPC is, they're not all DPW projects. I mean, any, any Long Meadow resident can find a good cause under the CPC, come up with an application that may or may not get vetted by the, by the board. That's a great thing, but again, we, we don't want to have an out-of-control process, Mr. Lo's point about having a plan. So I, I see the group as influencers, definitely information sharers, and in some respects, helping Barry with some questions.
But are you ever, I mean, you, you talked about a subcommittee or, you know, I mean, what, that's what I'm trying to get to, what role you play in, you know, there's influencers and then there's influencers. I guess, I guess I'm trying to understand a little bit.
Influencers, influencers.
Right.
We're working up.
Okay, that's fine, I, you know, it's tough to...
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you, David.
Okay, well, thanks for your service and we, thanks for volunteering for another term.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. And I, Margaret Cohen, we'll have you in. And you are applying for the Historical Commission?
That's correct.
And could you just give us your, your name and, or you, you know, your name, address and, and why you're interested in continuing as an incumbent?
Margaret Cohen, C-O-H-N, and I live at 66 Woodland Road in Long Meadow.
All right.
And I would like to continue with the Historical Commission. It's been quite a ride the last few months, the last year, in working to preserve but Long Meadow's unique historical heritage, but also to fashion it into living history, something where we maintain the character of our town, but yet we can move along with the times and keep Long Meadow's character and understand its roots and yet accommodate economics and the changing demographics in town and, and just try to maintain our character.
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay. So what would you say is the project that you were most excited about that the District Commission was involved, or the Commission was involved?
Well, there's a couple. All the improvements that have been made at the Stores House with various grants and the work that's being done there by Beth, Beth Hoff, it's just amazing what she's been able to accomplish there. And of course, the Brewer Young Mansion. For me, it was a learning experience in how a town functions and the different people that are in it and how to, how to come to some agreement on a way to move forward. And then how to live when a decision has been made that you might not agree with, but yet we all have to get along and, and still keep the interests of the town in mind.
Yeah, well, it was an exciting, exciting year for your commission, so, and, all right. Well, as an incumbent, you know, we appreciate you, the service you've done and we'll let you know in a couple of weeks about your...
Can we ask her a question?
Yes, oh, I didn't think, I asked once, sorry.
You seem to be the only one talking, Tom. Good evening.
Hi.
What, what's your feelings on the, the Young Mansion?
Um...
I mean, for the town, not your personal feelings. How about the decision for the town that was made?
Um, I think the process, it was important to go through the process of the debate, the presentations that various people made for and against and the voices that came out on both sides of the issue. And I was very, I was very impressed with the fact that so many people were concerned in, in various ways about either maintaining the mansion or way to the other side of, you know, the green can't be touched. And, and some people's thoughts surprised me. I, I was surprised that there were such deep feelings about various aspects of the project. I'm glad that the town, I'm glad we got it to a vote and had people express in a democratic fashion what we should do with the property because I think it's a significant property. It's not just another old house that happens to be on the green. I, I think it's significant and how we handled it, I think, went very well.
Okay, like it. There you go, Tom.
Okay, I'm sorry. Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
And then we have another Recycling Commission, Arlene Miller, and Virginia is not here.
Virginia's not here.
Virginia, right here.
Ryder.
Ryder, no, so...
Arlene Miller, 68 East Greenwich Road. Great to talk trash and recycling with you guys, talk about it again later. So I'm applying again for a three-year term on the Recycling Commission and I... and I'm taking the lead from Richard's speech at the... Or four-minute comments at the dedication or the groundbreaking for the DPW yard. I thought I'd give you some facts about the Recycling Commission. So, it was formed in about 1981, might have been '82, which was at the same time in town when, some of you will remember, we closed the dump down in the meadows and went from every other week trash, taking the can from the back of your garage, to every week trashed. Any of you remember that? You weren't here.
I wasn't here.
Were you here then? Big upward difference of different service. And people were upset that the garbage guy wasn't going to go to the back of the garage, but it was cheaper for the town to go every week at the curb. So, that was a big change. Along with that came the change from a $5 a ton cost to handle our trash to, over the years, up to about $80 a ton to handle our trash. So, recycling evolved into our picture. Waste bans came from the state, a lot of regulation, a lot of rules and regs about how to handle different materials in the waste, where it couldn't all just go to one place. Now, it had to be sorted and separated, and some things couldn't go in the trash anymore, and they had to be handled differently. Long Meadow has been a leader over the years in recycling. Right from the get-go, we saw value in that. And so, our program is very comprehensive. We have a special leaf composting program in the meadows, very unique in the state. We have a recycling center which handles all kinds of hard-to-manage waste. We have a swap shop so people can reduce their waste and reuse things. And we have a curbside program that is a waste reduction program where each household is given a certain amount of waste weekly at the curb, which is part of the tax base. Excess waste goes in the blue bags, the overthrow bags. And we've subsequently saved the town a lot of money. But all of this, through all of this, the Recycling Commission has acted as an advisor to the Select Board and to the DPW and to the residents. And it's been really the, sort of acted like a recycling coordinator for the community. It's been involved with ideas and policy and recommendations. It's been certainly the energy for any education, recycling education in the community. We help get grants. We run the hazardous waste events. We do shredding events. So, the Recycling Commission is very active and, I think, a big asset to the community. So, it's a privilege to be honored, and I'd like to be able to continue.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, Margaret?
I think I'm jumping the agenda, but I have no clue why. What can we gain by doing a survey of who...
You are definitely ahead of the game.
I know I am. Since you're here and you're...
But I'm going to stay.
Oh, okay. I withdraw my question.
Withdraw the question.
About two hours from now.
Don't forget that thought.
That's my report, right?
No, no.
It's a solid waste discussion.
All right.
Maybe drag it three hours.
I can talk trash all night.
Well, you know, I owned a home in Springfield for 20 years. And one of the things they did there that was kind of unique was they would compost the leaves, and then to public parks...
I love it.
They would drop off these huge piles of composted soil for people in their gardens. And recently, I was talking to someone about gardening in town, and they said, "Well, this soil is mostly sand." They didn't know how productive it would be. Is there any chance that we could provide, you know, soil in some of the parks?
We did a program with our yard waste, our leaves, some years ago in the gardens down the Pomeroy tract. The Conservation Commission and DEP gave us the authority or the ability to dump their windrow. We can't windrow in the meadows because it's a flood plain. So, windrow is where you make the big piles, and it turns into dirt, and then you make it available. So, we were able to do it at the Pomeroy tract, and it was going very well. We made one mistake, and that is we turned the pile on a warm, windy day in August. And instead of wetting it down and turning it. And it was a learning process, and neighbors got upset, and Conservation Commission got upset. But meanwhile, the leaves and the compost and everything was managed pretty well, and so it made itself into wonderful soil. We had it tested at UMass. It was great, great stuff. And we did bag it one year. We had it at Long Meadow Days, and we had the compost. We brought the compost over to near where the salt stuff is, where residents can take it. It wasn't like hotcakes. It was great stuff. And we would love to do it again, and maybe one day when we cap the old landfill, we might be able to do something like that somewhere in town. Just one of my dreams is to have the yard waste.
So, the leave recycling now and the yard waste, we can't, we don't really... We're not able to get soil that would be able to...
No. What happens there is we spread those leaves for about four inches deep down in the meadows. If you've ever seen it, they did do it with a manure spreader, actually. It's kind of cool. And then they till it into the ground, and it composts in place. So, it's all spread out. And what it does is it fertilizes that soil, saves the farmer from using more fertilization, prevents erosion of that field, those fields. So, it's kind of a win-win. And it's much less expensive for us than shipping it all out of town, because we don't have a place unless we can raise the meadows like when we camp the old landfill. Then that's out of the flood plain, because it's high enough. We might be able to do that. But that's down the road.
Okay. Well, now, it's an interesting thing, just because it is nice to have... I have my own composting. And what about for people to compost their own?
Sure.
Do we...
Food.
Food compost? Yeah. Do we have, like, you know, some towns, they have free or they can provide composting, those black ones?
Compost bins. I'm glad you asked that. Yes. The town of Long Meadow has a program where we provide... We get, we use grant money, actually, to buy the compost bins. And we subsidize the sale of those. So, for $25, residents get one of the bins and, for nothing, an additional food scrap bucket that you could put in your kitchen to put your waste, bring it out. I do the same thing. It's amazing how much you can save and reduce your trash by composting food waste.
And those are available at the recycle center?
DPW.
DPW?
During business hours, yes.
During business hours?
$25 for the bin, for the compost bin, and the bucket is free.
Because I haven't, you know, I haven't seen much marketing on that.
It's on the website. And we did a demo at Earth Day down at the Recycling Center. We did another demo at our booth at...
Long Meadow Days? Did you? Okay. Okay. Well, good.
But that's great. That's a good... We need to do more of that.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be nice if we could get more people to compost those food wastes.
It's really terrific. It's fun. And you get great dirt.
Yeah. I do it... My son actually had the soil tested at the high school.
Really?
My soil won. Had the best soil. So, I highly recommend composting.
That's great. Well, you could do a song and a demo, and we could... That'd be good publicity for our compost.
Might be a dirty song.
Be all right? You could write a song about it.
Well, I have a song about it, how in nature, there's really no waste. You know, what seems like waste from one thing brings another thing to life. That's a line from the song.
You're serious?
I'm serious.
Well, this is great.
It's not exactly... It's a little digger than that.
I give you my time to talk. That's great.
Well, thank you. Any other questions?
I'm exhausted, Tom.
All right. Then we will... I believe we have... We should have a... No, we don't see Mr. Carnahan. Or Zoning Board of Appeals, Michael. So, we will hold and see if folks show up later. We have a couple of people who will be... One more person will be late, Michael Mishon of the Zoning Board. So, we'll get back to him. And so, we can move back to our standard agenda, which will have us look at the Select Board comments. And Richard, I know you've been waiting for this.
Yes, I have. I get to come right out of the box, too. We had a fantastic groundbreaking ceremony this week for the DPW, or actually, it was last Friday, for the DPW, the new DPW complex. We had wonderful lunch. It was a well-attended event. Everybody gave short, concise speeches. And I guess groundbreaking is getting ready to take place. And I think the highlight of it was I met the parents of our town manager. And I really enjoyed a conversation with his parents. His mother apparently watches every one of our meetings. So, hi. Give a shout out to mom. I sincerely mean that. His parents were very cordial. They were a very nice couple.
As I said at the time, now that you've met them, you can't blame them.
And Stephen went on record. He was on the microphone, and he called me his buddy. And I walked away with a smile on. Okay? That's it, Tom.
Doesn't get better than that. Mark old.
Change the tone a little bit here.
Well, that's not... Why? It's a good tone.
So, today on my way home, I was thrilled to see that much of the work appears by Columbia Gas on Laurel Street seems to have closed up. Columbia Gas finally closed the... They have a, I think it's a pumping station or a transfer station or something on Laurel between Williams and... I think it's between Bliss and Williams or Converse and Bliss or something like that. But one of the things that kind of struck me along the way is that for the last six or eight weeks, that this was turned into somewhat of a crazy situation. But I was disappointed to see the parking on the tree belt. And I say that because if I, or a citizen going to the park, had parked on the tree belt all day long, we probably would have been told to move our car along. But somehow, the Columbia contractors were okay for parking their cars on the tree belt all day long while they also had their trucks and stuff, which we necessarily needed for doing the digging they were doing. And I think that goes hand in glove with my comments at the last meeting that Columbia was parking their things overnight and over the weekends, more importantly, at our park. And I just like to encourage our town departments to work with the utilities to, you know... If we've got bylaws that I can't park on the tree belts, they shouldn't be able to park on the tree belts. If I can't park my cars overnight in the parks, they shouldn't be able to park their trucks overnight in the parks. We can certainly make arrangements for them to park in... Down in the DPW, we've got big parking garages or somewhere else. So, that's my only comment. It was... But it looks like the bulk of the work is getting completed now as we move to summer with a lot of kids walking in the streets and riding their bikes on the sidewalks.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Well, I have a comment. I guess I'd start with congratulating, you know, the superintendent of schools and the school committee, or school committee, because we had an event that happened in this last week with Bryn Cartelli going to all the schools. And I was able to go to one with Stephen. And it was just so exciting to see these young children in all the schools just happier than you can imagine. I mean, they were just so happy when she walked in, and they're clapping, and young people were crying with excitement. It was like seeing the Beatles. And of course, you know, Bryn, to see her in person is really a special treat. And so, I'd recommend it to anyone in the town who gets a chance to hear her perform. She was great with the kids, and it was just an exciting time for the schools. And I appreciate the school, the effort that they had to put into, all the teachers, to have this assembly, several assemblies in all the grammar schools and middle schools. I imagine they'll have something for the high school at some point. But it was really a nice thing to see and be part of. And the Select Board, we did talk about giving her recognition, and so I gave her a plaque on that. The other thing is Eversource has sent me a letter, and they had... You know, we had met with them in the last meeting, and this is a letter in response to some of the questions that they had... We had brought up with them specifically about the cost of, like, pole removal and things like that. I have one for Marie. Maybe Paul and Stephen could do that. But so, you can take a look at this. And obviously, you'll see that the price of... Oh, I have another one here, actually. The price would go up a lot. It's something we can... I'm sure we'll have a chance to discuss at a future meeting. But they did respond to the questions. And I know Stephen will do some ongoing negotiations with them in regards to their ability to do a five-year phase-in, purchasing of the streetlights, which will allow the town to save money on electricity because we could use more efficient LED lighting. And that's the end of my comment. And we will move to the town manager's report.
Thanks, Tom. Didn't have the opportunity to prepare a written report in large part because we were engaged in a couple of the events that were discussed and a few other unexpected occurrences that happened last week. And in terms of the event for Bryn Cartelli, a lot of work went behind the scenes, went into being able to coordinate that event. Our primary goal, you know, we've received calls from residents who wanted to do something for her. And our first obligation was really to the Cartelli family and their wishes. And then our obligation 1A was to the safety and security of her, as well as other students. And so, I want to commend the Police Department and the school administration for working well together to conceive a plan and execute the event just about as well as it possibly could be. I feel like we did a good job satisfying the community's need to connect with Bryn, especially the schoolchildren. That was something that was really meaningful to her and her family. I do have confidence that there will be a bigger event at some point in time, but it won't be managed by the town. As we discovered early in the planning stages, we are not event planners and large-scale security forces. So, we got out of our depth fairly quickly in talking about these things. And we know that, I know that the Cartellis are going to try and figure something out with a partner who's more equipped to do something like that. We did have a pool chemical leak last week at Bliss Park as well, and I'd sent the board an email about that. It was an equipment malfunction issue, and I think we... The number of vehicles and personnel at the scene probably gave it more of a significance than it had. We did have the right people on scene, and the situation was assessed very quickly. A plan of action was developed quickly, and it was resolved and remediated, I think, fairly quickly as well. I think everybody made it home for dinner that night, so it wasn't a prolonged event. But it did take up a fair bit of that afternoon. And as Richard noted, on Friday, we had the DPW groundbreaking that the board members were there for. And it was a great day. I was glad that my parents, who were passing through on their way north, were able to stop by. But the day was really about giving thanks to the community and to acknowledge the DPW employees who serve the community day in and day out and make the connection between the community's understanding that they need a decent place to work and the work that they put in for the community. And I felt like we conveyed that fairly clearly. And, you know, it was a good event. Paul Pasterzak and Mike Spear from our DPW did a nice job working the grill. And a good time, I think, was had by all. Other than that, I don't have much more on the town manager's report for this week.
Okay. All right. Great. Any questions for the town manager about anything going on?
Oh, you know what I do? Hydrant flushing... I think we've reported before, DPW actually has been shorthanded all year, quite frankly. And part of that is there's been, you know, sick injury or illness absences. We've had positions open that we have advertised, been unable to find qualified candidates and re-advertised. There are some seasonal positions. We had created a new seasonal position for the high school to specifically manage the grounds here full-time for the season. And I think we're finally, I think we finally have an applicant that will fit the bill. But the first round, we didn't get any candidates that we really thought could do the job. And that's four weeks of process that you lose. So, one of the net results is a lot of work has been deferred, and we are trying to get through the hydrant flushing. So, hydrant flushing is going on right now as we speak. I think they're out in town flushing hydrants right now. So, if you are on the water system near hydrants that are being flushed, you may notice a little discoloration, which is typical. So, just run your faucet for a little bit and clear up.
Okay. Great. Paul?
You may recall that during the last two investment reports that we were utilizing two banks that did not have the highest rating of green. The March 31st quarter we report from Verabank, which is the rating outfit that we used, did come out with their latest reports, and those two banks are at a green level right now. So, we're all at the highest level with all the banks that we're currently utilizing. And then last week, I was notified... And then last week, I was notified that as Peter Landon had shown that comprehensive annual financial report, that was recognized by the Government Finance Officers Association as a certificate of award for his presentation. So we got that also last week that came in after about six months of waiting for that. But, which is good, the first time we had actually failed with that. And we tightened up and got another little trophy.
Yeah, that's great. Congratulations on that. It's nice to see that our budgeting practices meet the level that we'd get recognition from the state. So, and this is, is this third time? How many times?
This is actually a different award. We've received a budget award. This is a comprehensive annual financial report. This is on financial reporting. So this is the first year that we've received this particular award.
So a new award.
Reward.
Recognition. Good, that's great, yeah.
And actually, I was gonna make a joke that we're putting in a reserve fund request to the finance committee to build a bigger trophy case. But then it reminded me that I do plan to submit a reserve fund request to the finance committee for $5,000. There's a, the drainage on Shaker Road in front of Long Meadow Country Club isn't really, the road isn't pitched really properly. So in heavy rains, it sheet flows down Shaker Road and across. And because they were doing a major renovation project, we got the contractor, La Plan Construction, to commit to assisting the town in fixing that as a part of the project. So the town engineer designed a fix for, basically installation of a new catch basin down from the driveway, kind of downhill, to tie the flow from the driveway and some flow up gradient from the, from the club, from the road itself. Pitch it towards this new catch basin now then connected to the storm drain system. The cost, we thought was gonna be around five grand. It turns out it's 10. We had to bid for nine, a bid for 11. The LCC had committed to contributing $5,000 towards that effort. And so because we're near the end of the fiscal year and as we've talked about, the DPW budget line items, we're not sure how they were gonna hit the year end. And so we want to, we went to the finance committee. It was not a planned project. In fact, I think January was when La Plan really got started on that.
And now, is the, is part of this flow tied to those two parking lots? I mean, there's parking lots on either side of the road there.
Some of it is, comes from up the street a little bit. The street isn't, doesn't have a good crown. And then part of it does flow out of the Long Meadow Country Club. But we spent a lot of time working, looking at different options and, or I say we, the town engineer and the site person for La Plan and kind of talked out some different ideas in this, the catch basin design that they have where they think will solve the problem and half the cost will be borne by the club.
Oh, half the cost should be borne by the club? Okay, all right, thanks for pointing.
And it was a longstanding, basically, it's been a longstanding problem. We've been looking at it. And LCC doing their project gave us a hook, if you will, to get some of the cost offset and work with the club because they do contribute to the problem.
Stephen, is it fair to say this is kind of an example of the stormwater utility that we're eventually, because of that fee, we would, you know, recover costs from an entity like Long Meadow Country Club for working on things like stormwaters such as this?
What I would say is, in the future, if the stormwater utility generated enough revenue, we would probably have resources in the utility instead of having to go to the finance committee. But this is kind of a one-off project. But these are the types of drainage projects that the stormwater utility will be utilized to finance. So like I said, it will be mostly on the money side. But we, but I think to answer your question a little differently, Mark, with MS4 now going into, or the state's version of MS4 now going into effect, we're gonna be required to deal with these much more aggressively than in the past.
Okay, great. Thank you. And, all right. So there's no other town manager questions? We can move to old business. And the first is to look for a motion to approve the minutes of May 21st.
Yeah, how move we approve the minutes of the May 21st select board meeting, subject to one amendment that I would like to offer?
Okay.
Second.
That amendment is in the minutes, talking about a discussion with Eversource, the minutes had, you know, said the town currently pays about $137,000 electrical costs. LED lights would take the cost down about 20%. And what I thought I said, or what at least I should have said, is to take the cost down to 20% of that value. So I've submitted those corrections to Debbie and hope that people accept that.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? All right, so we, you know, with that amendment to the minutes, do we take a vote? All those in favor of approving it? Okay, thank you. And now we move to the Springfield Water and Sewer Letter and potential changes to rates and after what happened last year. I hope it's not more bad news.
Right, well, for the second year in a row, the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission had changed their original projections for capital projects that they were going to have part of their fiscal year budget. The select board as Water and Sewer Commissioners has a policy of trying to set rates before consumption starts. So we've actually began setting rates back in late January, early February timeframe a few years back. We did actually set Water and Sewer rates back in, I believe it was early February or late January of this year. And we set them very close to level to what they were in FY18. With the water, there was some discussion and we had actually reduced the amount of reserves that we had set up within the water down to about $98,000. This change that the Springfield Water and Sewer Commissioners alone is a $78,000 ticket, which is about six or seven cents on the Water and Sewer, on the Water rates. It has no effect on sewer. But compounding that also is the fact that we now have the timing set for the, to go out to bid for the DPW bonding. That's going to take place in mid-August. And again, back in late January, February, we didn't have a date set. And I was kind of just watching to make sure that we were gonna have enough money. And we probably still would have had enough money with those reserves that we set up. But given now the fact that we're getting two little hits, one from the Water and Sewer Commissioner, one from the Water and Sewer Commissioners of Springfield, and then the other hit with a potential minimally a half-year worth of interest on that DPW borrowing, I'm making a recommendation that you folks again, review those Water and Sewer bills, or Water and Sewer rates. I've made a suggestion about what I thought would be fair and equitable rate increase to take effect with the next billing that would go out in September, realizing that there's not a, we don't want to hit the taxpayer too hard. There were about a 3% increase overall to the rates that were in effect. So it's nothing extraordinary. I put those recommendations within the packet. I'm just looking for my sheet to get the exact amounts. Whereas the current rates right now voted for, for the sewer rate is $2.50. I am proposing that that rate go up to $2.56. And on the Water rate, the current rate that was approved was $3.22. I'm making a recommendation that those rates be increased to $3.32, from 322 to 332, basically to cover both of these instances that have recently come up.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
Tom, some questions?
Yeah.
Paul, let's start with Water because, I mean, it applies to both. But in the Water rate table that you showed us, you have a projection for the water retained earnings at the end of fiscal year 2018 of $566,000?
Correct.
Okay, so if, and our target has always been about $500,000. I think it was even a minimum we tried to set.
Raise the minimum.
Of $500,000. And so I guess my question is, if we're at 566 in theory, if we are guessing correctly on the amount of water that's gonna be purchased, which is a guess, but if we are guessing correctly, then we'll balance this budget and end up with the same $566,000. And so my short question is, included in that budget is $41,000 more in FY19 to be added to the reserves.
Correct.
And is that because we don't believe we're guessing correctly or is that, why?
We historically have budgeted reserves. Again, there's the whole line item, Mark, it's in the middle of that page. We had started budgeting $150,000 annually in that particular line item. It was reduced to down to $94,000 because I had made a recommendation back in January that the rates be a little bit higher. You folks brought them down so the, because the budget, the operating budget had to be set at X, Y, and Z, the only place to make that balance was from the reserves. So they were actually reduced at that point in time. We are looking at taking another hit against those only to not have a large Water rate increase. I mean, we can put the 150 back up there, but it's going to cost another, you know, 13 cents. And I don't think we want to hit the consumers just that much at one point in time.
I'm arguing the opposite because I thought, and my recollection may be incorrect here, that a few years ago, we were suffering from a water reserve fund that was below our target.
We were.
And so we were putting, intentionally putting money into the reserves to get back up to our $500,000 target, which we've only hit within the last year and a half or so.
Right.
Couple of years. And so, you know, now that we're at that target, I'm just, again, with the same outlook to can we do something to save some people's pocketbooks, not put, not budget $41,000 going to the reserves. You change the increase from 322 to 327 instead of from 322 to 332.
That would be a policy decision.
Right, but I just wanted to make sure I understood where the 47,000 in reserves was for because I'm not, you know, if we're guessing right, and everybody needs to understand, we're guessing on the amount of water it's gonna be. If we're guessing right, we'll end up next year with $47,000 extra in our reserve fund. Who knows if we're guessing right?
Right.
But I'm just saying, you know, maybe that's what reserves are for and we'd be better off on our consumers, giving them only a five cent increase instead of a 10 cent increase on their Water rates. And potentially, if we're guessing right, we're still at our minimum reserve.
Still at your minimum.
All right, well, again, as I look at this chart, it looks like from in the last four years, we've gone up 90 cents on our Water rate? Pretty much?
In 2014, we were at $2.39. So in the last five years.
In five years.
We've gone up that almost a dollar, yes.
Almost a dollar, you know? And, you know, that's a big jump in five years. I know everything, the price of everything goes up, but when you think about that. And so, yeah, I guess I would see that anything we could do to kind of keep that down. But the biggest thing is, you know, you have, as you know, Springfield, it's, you know, 2.25 million dollars in projects, right? I mean, and what are we gonna, or no?
I'm not arguing that we not pay that. I'm just, I'm looking at what we can do internally. I mean, we built our reserves back to the minimum level that we needed them at. I'm the first one to tell you, every year, the amount of water we use is gonna be dependent upon whether it's wet or dry and, you know, after the first, after the first fiscal year, people use water. And if you can tell me that, then you're gonna, you shouldn't be sitting at this table. You should be sitting somewhere else. But, so I think it's just a, an opportunity for us to not hit the ratepayers as high. And I, you know, and I appreciate, Paul, you keeping that in there. I mean, that's your job to recommend it. I just, you know, Paul, Tom, I don't think we can do anything about the city of Springfield.
Yeah.
They're gonna do what they're gonna do. They're gonna charge us for the water we're gonna, we're gonna use. We've got our own internal capital needs and our own internal costs of distributing the water. But, you know, the reserves is the only thing I, the only place I see that we can potentially trim this back a little bit. And that's, that was basically my comment. I think also, Tom, if I could, you know, I alluded to this at the last meeting. I think, you know, fool me once, shame on me, fool me, or fool me one, shame on you, fool me twice, shame on me. This is two years in a row, city of Springfield's kind of come in late. I think us setting, trying to set Water rates early is, you know, it was nice in theory when Alex Grant suggested people know in advance of using their water that they know what the rates are. But it's not working out because the city of Springfield's not telling us what it's gonna cost us until now. So I'd suggest we not only adjust the rates now, but tell Paul, don't waste a lot of time doing it in January, February, until we really know what the city of Springfield's gonna do.
We'll have an estimate at that point in time, let it be.
We'll have an estimate.
Okay, well, great. Well, thanks for bringing us up to date on that, Paul. So, yes, Richard?
Yeah, I don't, I like you don't have quite as much emotion as Mark has on the issue. I agree, Mark, it'd be nice to roll it back and then we may have to jump it twice next year because we're in trouble. It's not, I couch my comments friendly here, $41,000 on this size account on something, it's not that much money. It really isn't. I'm like Tom, I'm concerned we've gone up 35% in the last, on this spreadsheet, but that's not our, it's not our increases. It's been brought on by Springfield to the greatest extent and we don't control that. Their charges, I'd be more concerned. What's the long-term forecast looking like on their improvements? Are you getting any ideas?
They do give us a estimate. I think it's also part of that, the package that was sent. Unfortunately, it fluctuates up and down, if I recall correctly.
Yeah.
That, you know, it's.
I mean, I kind of the Cliff Notes version. I guess that's what I'm after, Paul.
Rich, but if you remember back two or three years ago, this is less than they said, three years ago, I mean, we had this thing going up to 385 or 390 at one point.
Yeah, that's true.
And we were, I remember trying to balance that and we went up a little bit excess early so we wouldn't have to go up as much, so.
But I think, I think it's important to keep our reserves. And I know you, you support the reserves.
Oh, I support the reserves, but I don't support excess reserves. It's just taxing people. And I guess the bigger question, Rich, besides just the rate is, you know, what's the average usage? Is it 150 units? Is it 80 units? Is it?
I think it's less than 150.
Yeah, I think, I think it's like 75 or 80 units, which, you know, 10 cents on 80 units is eight bucks.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we're not talking a lot of money if that's the average cost. But on somebody who's, again, sprinkling their lawn, they're gonna feel it.
I think you also, though, if you're having a holistic discussion, is that we could have an extra 2 million and we could spend it tomorrow. That's the real thing that people have to understand. This is, we're not, this is not a guaranteed whole system. The efficiencies in the system is phenomenal. And look at the projects we're doing right now, getting rid of these four-inch lines. I mean, we're doing critical safety improvements instead of a real programmatic thing. So, you know, I understand your point, Mark, but I guess with a total deficiency load of what we know positivities ahead on this water system, this 40, 41, 47,000 is not much money. I mean, it could be used on a small project right now. We've got the projects. It's, and it's valid. You know, it's something we're gonna have to face in our community for eons now. Our infrastructure is aging and it's gonna need repair. Yes, Stephen? Oh, excuse me, Tom, you're the chair.
Yes, Stephen.
Just a comment to echo Mark's point about maybe waiting to set the rates until we have our rate from the commission so you don't have to have this conversation twice. It has last couple of years been somewhat duplicative. And I don't think, I don't think there's a broad, you know, outpouring of, you know, complaint from the community that they didn't know what the price of the water was when they turned their sprinkler on. Otherwise, they wouldn't have, they would have only watered six days a week instead of seven days a week. I mean, I think it's people just, they have their habits, they try and find efficiencies where they can, but the rate is gonna be the rate. Everyone's a utility customer for gas, electric, oil, cable. I mean, it's just the way it is. So I would echo that recommendation. The only I'll say about the commission is that in the time that I've been here, they are under new leadership. And I do believe that there is a sincere commitment to attack some of these long-term deferred maintenance things that may not all be in Long Meadow, but are system-wide improvements. And that's, and I think we said three or four years ago that this was, that when they finally adopt, finally adopted a long-range plan that they were gonna commit to, we, I think we'd given information saying it was gonna be even worse than it is. So I want to commend the commission. So I want to commend the commission for really being more assertive on making upgrades. But I would also say, it doesn't, it really makes less sense for our purposes to do this two-step on the sewer rates, the water and sewer rates.
Mark, can I ask, Paul, had Springfield not drawn this curve at us, would we have come back and said, we really want to adjust the rates because of the DPW bonding? Or are we using this as an?
I would have come back and said, we need an appropriation for the, for the bonding, and how you want to do it would have been really, you know, we could have taken it out of reserves at the time, knowing that we're budgeting reserves, or we could have taken it out of rates with an increase to the rate. So I would have brought forward to you folks the option of how you're going to do it. We certainly need the appropriation.
All right, so we won.
Mark, do you have a motion?
You're not going to like my motion.
Well, give it, you're going to give it anyway. I just.
No, no, I.
Speed up the process.
You know, I just was going to move that we set the water rates at $3.27 by eliminating $41,000 in, that's currently budgeted for additional reserve funding.
Second for discussion.
Okay, and open for discussion.
I mean, I, just, there needs to be no more discussion. I think we've talked.
Right, we've had the discussion already, so it's just a matter of how we personally feel about it.
Yeah, so, I have nothing to comment on, anyone else? So we'll vote for those in favor of the motion of $3.27.
327.
327, okay. All those in favor?
This is for the water.
Opposed? Okay. So we'll.
Close vote.
We'll move forward on this. And of course, you know, with all this work that Springfield's doing with aerators and everything, our, our water will be even better than it's been, and people will continue to buy bottled water in plastic containers, no doubt.
Again, there's the recommendation on the sewer.
Well, I'm going to ask the same question.
Well, yeah, I mean, you can, again, I can give you the same response. You have two options. We need the appropriation, the appropriation will be in the fall. Do you want to take it out of reserves, which are budgeted for here at 100,000? Or do you want to raise the rate to pay for it?
But the difference is, in the water department, our reserves were 516 or 550,000 dollars versus a minimum 500. And sewer, they're 815,000 versus a minimum of 500,000. So from my perspective, my perspective only, we got a lot more room to let our, pardon the expression, let our reserves run down a little bit before we're in a situation where, you know, we hit that minimum requirement of 500,000 dollars.
But I will give you a counter argument, that they only went up 15 cents in the last five years as opposed to 94 cents, the rates.
Right, but during that, you're right, the rates only went up, but during that time, our reserves have continued to climb, which says that even at those rates, we seem to, and I dread myself saying this, but we seem to be charging people for sewers not used, perhaps because of lawn watering, but we're actually getting money in that we're not having to spend to the city of Springfield. And from my perspective, if the budget's balanced, and we're not going up on the rate, and the reserves are at least steady, and in this case, they've been just tweaking upward. I won't say they've been thriving, Paul. You know, we talked at one point about using those reserves for some significant capital, sewer capital projects, so that we didn't have to go out and bond something and bring the reserves down closer to 500,000 dollars. I mean, my sense is that if, you know, if we budget as we think, you know, if the water, again, if we guess right in the water usage, we can set a sewer rate of $2.50 and still end up with 800, or $800,000 in reserves, which is what we're starting with. And that includes the additional funding that you put in there for, you know, that we need. And I'm not just saying you did, that we need for bonding the DPW project. I mean, the difference between water and sewer is simply the sewer reserves were hovering just above our minimum, and the sewer is, you know, 60% above our minimum. That's, that's the difference. If you want to, Tom, I'll make a motion that we set the water rates at, we set, excuse me, we set the sewer rates at.
Are you keeping where they are again?
$2, yeah. We don't, yeah, we take no action on the sewer rates and hold it at $2.50.
Okay, we have a second on that? Okay, do we have an alternate motion?
No, we've got, we've got a proposal that's been given to us by the CFO that's under discussion.
I mean, we don't, we don't need my motion. If we take no action, we're holding them where they're, we've already set the rates.
Right. Okay, so then that's, that's done. All right, Paul, is there anything else we need to address in terms of this?
Turn the water and sewer, no, I'm all set with the water and sewer.
Okay. So then we can move on to the next agenda item?
Yeah.
Which is Westcom discussion with the fire and police chiefs, if we could, have you join us?
Thanks, Speaker.
So we're going to start with the eye test?
Yeah.
What do you see? Okay, so we've got some information in our handouts, some spreadsheets, and a whole bunch of different stuff. I don't know where we should start. Any specific document you want to start with, or you want to make a general comment to begin with?
Tom, I'd like to make a general comment to begin with.
Okay, thank you.
Since we talked a lot about this somewhat in generalities, the information that the chiefs are going to present, which was also developed with the assistance of Paul Pesterzakul, is also the interim finance director for the, for Westcom, is the most up-to-date and most specific information we have that really shows the financial picture. And so the conversation that we're hoping to have can be, I think primarily, we've been focusing on the financial aspects of it as well, because the operational considerations are things we assessed early on, were going to be good for us. But they're open to answering any questions from an operational standpoint, as am I. But I just want to relay to the board that this information is really only recently developed in terms of the information from potential vendors and, you know, the changing from a four-town wreck to a two-town wreck. So this information was really recently developed for our benefit. And so the, this is one of the reasons why we haven't had a more detailed conversation about it until now, is because the details really didn't, hadn't really been nailed down like they are now. So I'll turn it over to the board and to chiefs and to Paul.
Okay.
Any specific questions?
There's two, and I guess I'll make one more comment for the board's benefits, maybe as a icebreaker. There's three considerations. There's the operational, as I outlined. And then for the financial component, there's two. There is operating costs, so year-to-year operating costs, how much we spend today versus what we would spend as a part of a district, which will receive a much greater incentive from the state based on their commitment. And then there is the midterm, really five-year lookout for capital costs that we would need to do for our own, for maintenance of our own systems. That would be 100% funded by the state versus the cap, those same capital needs being 100% funded by the district. And so the details are, you know, the detailed numbers are there. And I want to commend both Chief Dearborn and Chief Stankowitz for their really great due diligence in researching and verifying these numbers.
Okay. Did I miss one of those? You said three?
No, operations was the first.
Operations, capital costs?
Operations, capital costs, and then, and operating costs.
And operating costs.
So I guess instead of, to avoid confusion? Improved call-taking. Improved, improved public, public safety services to the, to the community is the first thing.
Okay, thank you, all right. So.
Well, when I was just looking at dispatch costs, when I present the first, I laid out everything it costs to operate our dispatch center. We look at $223,987 just for personnel costs. But I've also included everything it is to cost in order to provide the services that we currently provide. That includes overtime, training, travel, CAD system, how much it costs for our computer-aided dispatch systems, what it costs for our OPEB costs, our retirement costs for workman's comp, dental, Medicare, retirement. All those costs I compiled, and what I came up with is a figure of $482,711 what it costs to run our operations currently annually. We receive a grant from the 911 department for $51,398 last year. If you were to take that out from our total cost, our net cost will be $431,313 this year, this fiscal year. I anticipate the costs in 2023, if you look at the right-hand column, to go up by 7% increase. And that includes OPEB, excuse me, a 2.5% annually, which is 10.4% over the next five years. So we're looking at $509,228 in FY2023. So we're seeing an increase from 431 to 509 over the next five years in order to operate our department or our dispatch center at a current level in five years. So that's how I broke it down.
And that's just staffing?
That's just staffing, and the complete operations of our dispatch operations, dispatch center.
Okay.
So from the capital perspective, that's the radio system, that's the gizmos that make everything work. We break that down to three basic parts. The subscribers, there are the mobile and portable radios. Our radio system supports police, fire, DPW, emergency management, and the schools. So it's an interoperable system. So not only can we, it's very efficient that we can all talk in our respective agencies, but in times that we need to, schools can communicate directly with police or fire, DPW can communicate. We actually enjoy a robust system for a community like ours. And they have stated, we've discussed this in the past, that was something we wanted to maintain with the wreck. We didn't want to go backwards. So the package that we put together with the wreck, we will maintain that capability moving forward. So we talked about subscribers, that's the mobile radios, the handheld radios, the vehicles that are mounted in the, the radios that are mounted in the cars. Our consoles, those are in dispatch, both police and fire department. We have some redundancy there. We have two in the police department and one in the fire department. And we have the transmit and receive sites. So currently, we operate off our water tower connected by fiber to some more hardware that's within the fire station, connects to the consoles in the police and the fire station, and that's how we transmit, receive, and in some cases, repeat the frequencies. The system is currently approaching 10 years old, so it has a 10- to 15-year lifespan, which is pretty good for electronics. We do fairly good maintenance on it. We don't have a lot of problems with it. It does have some performance issues. At the time it was designed, for the money that was available, this is the best we could do. The thing I showed you on the back, the, you know, I go throughout the eye test, this is a coverage map for town. This is a mid-improvement, which we're going for. We currently have some areas in town, from a public safety perspective, they're unacceptable. Our western, like up in Western Ave, up at that 91 kind of quarter core up there, it's very poor. We get down into the Meadows area, there's some challenges there. And when we get out to Twin Hill, Green Hill, area out there, there's some challenges out there. We build in some opportunities with the wreck to improve our capabilities for transmit and receive by adding some, some basically tower sites, but they're existing tower sites that we have capability on. We currently don't have any hardware at the existing DPW cell tower. There's another cell tower that's going up, and we're actually looking at some other opportunities in town to improve our transmit and receive. So that's an important aspect for us. We want to actually have an acceptable public safety radio system. And ours right now is, it's not, not perfect by any stretch of the imagination. Exterior building, we're okay. When we get inside houses, and if you ever go to a basement of a house, you're, you will never be able to talk to anybody. Some of our larger facilities, we have a lot of challenges there. So we've approached the wreck. We've said we want to not only maintain our current radio system, we want to fix the issues we have. And that's what we, that's what we have in the engineering design so far. So, so the numbers, and I, in the proposal, I won't get into that in a lot of depth. So when we do the wreck, we're still going to need to maintain the radio, the subscriber services, which are the portables and mobile radios for the schools and DPWs. The wreck will not absorb that, those aspects of it. However, the wreck will absorb our transmit-receive system, all right, which is the big-ticket item. But we're not going to switch frequencies or do a fast technology change. So all that equipment that DPW and the schools currently has will still work. I would encourage us to continue to reinvest in that equipment. We've actually, 2017, started to reinvest in some of that equipment that wears, the portables and the mobiles. There's, that's the stuff that's out in the field, it just doesn't last. It's an electronic piece of equipment, it's bouncing around all the time. So we need to continue to reinvest, so we maintain the system. So, so if you look at the spreadsheets that I provided you, you'll see the top one. That's basically, we just keep doing what we're doing. And really, from 2017 to 2023, we have about $1.8 million liability. Now, these numbers I'm providing you are based on all the quotes that we've gotten for actually building the wreck. I'm not making them up. We've gone out, spent hard-earned hours with vendors going through the specifications and how to do this. These are real, these are very solid numbers. So taking out all the stuff that the wreck will absorb, we knocked that down to about $300,000. And that's, some of that's been spent already, that's maintained the school and DPW subscribers. We will need to maintain some internal system service, because we will need the service contracts to maintain those subscribers. And that will be most of what our costs will be, and doing some reinvestment into the school and the DPW work. So our debt savings, again, this is based on quotations we have for the equipment that's going into the wreck, is about $1.5 million in capital in 2023.
Okay, any questions on the bottom line on this?
My question is, so I see where you've shifted those responsibilities over the wreck. But they have to be accounted for somehow, right? So there's a charge someplace else that will come to us.
Right.
There's another spreadsheet in there that actually shows the wreck budget and the grant award for FY18, what's been proposed and submitted for FY19, and then there's a proposed budget already in development for FY20. There is a line item down there that you'll look, it is called Equipment, that you'll see a lot of that money will be coming from the state as far as with, with, if we do get exactly what was submitted, we would get a $2.5 million grant in FY19, of which about $2 million is specifically for that equipment.
Right, the other thing I have, concern I have is, taking that number for fiscal year 19, submitted 2.5 million, so the whole thing is a grant. What if some year doesn't happen?
So, well, I, once the equipment's in place?
You only have to pay for the equipment once every 10 years.
Oh, that's just for equipment?
That's just for equipment. That's a capital.
Yeah, the vast majority of our build-out is going to happen under the 18, 19, and we'll finish up some.
That's not the operating budget, which is a whole different story.
The operating budget really takes effect in FY20, which is still, again, there's a, there's a good portion, there's a, I mean, most of the money at that point in time is in operations and tied up in salaries and benefits. You know, $2.2 million in FY20. You know, two-point-two million dollars in FY twenty is a proposal, with another near million dollars in the operating expenses per se.
We're spending the next year looking to upgrade, enhance the equipment, and that's where the two million dollars is coming from. And that's already been, we already have the grant for that. That's been already...
Bill, if I could, I think the question that we ought to be asking is, in column, you know, in cell I thirty-six there, which is the two thousand and twenty budget, that number, two-point-four million dollars, is a proposed state grant for operations.
Yep.
And the question is, how secure is that, looking out two years, having heard this morning and this evening already, that our promised community preservation went from a hundred percent match to seventeen percent? The, the police department, you know, budgets for, for additional educational budgets, the Quinn grants went to zero, and, you know, that's a lot of money that we're anticipating getting. And I don't know if any of us can answer the question, because my question is a theoretical question. How much do we trust the state in two years, three years, and eight years to continue to fund, if I'm using my numbers right, somewhere around seventy-five percent of the, of the cost of this, of this rec? That, that's the critical question.
That's right. That's a question that we have discussed at length at WestCom Board of Directors meetings, and that's one of the reasons that, you know, it's a competitive grant program. And so the, the nine-one-one department can't tell you, we're going to give you this much money next year and this much money the following year, because it's, it's written, the legislation wrote it as a competitive grant process. That uncertainty was one of the reasons why I've been handed in East Long Meadow, did not want to continue with this. Our discussions with the nine-one-one department, as well as the city of Chickapi, led us to believe that, or give us the confidence, really, that the state is committed to this, at least in the near term. I think long-term, the state knows that we have to provide this emergency service. And so even if it's just the capital in this initial round, that's a big gain for the town, because it will have that equipment to provide this service. And I don't know if it's a hundred percent apples to apples, but doing this with Chickapi, if you look at the chief's number of four hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars for operating expenses, and then you look at the two thousand and twenty budget for WestCom, and I know the two-point-two-six-five doesn't include some of the line items that are included in, in Chief Stankowitz's analysis of operating expenses, but just by comparison, our seventeen-point-seven percent share of that two-point-two is about three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So even if we got zero from the state from an operating standpoint, we get an extra half a dispatcher, twenty-four-seven, that we don't currently have today, for essentially the same money. And then you add the capital savings on top of that. Now, we've been getting state nine-one-one assistance grants, support grants is what they're called, for years. It is a cellphone surcharge. So it is not a, it is not incompetent, it is a cellphone surcharge dedicated by statute to this purpose. It is not a property tax or sales tax fund that is fought for by the, fought over by the legislature year in, year out. So the, the funding source and the way the statute is written is the first kind of line of defense we have, that this funding is going to be secure for the foreseeable future. But as I noted, there's a compelling case to do this. Right now, it's seventy-five percent. Even if the grant dropped to fifty percent for the support grant, it's still a significant amount of savings for the town from an operating standpoint. Again, we just laid out a million and a half in capital savings of things we would probably need to do on our own as it is. So I, I think we, we've kind of gone through that same analysis, Mark, and, and like I said, from an operating standpoint, it's favorable, and we think from a financial support standpoint, it's favorable.
Well, I had a question. So when we look at this revenue source from nine-one-one calls, how much do we get from those calls now? How much, do we get any money from nine-one-one calls? Is there any money that comes to help us?
And the way they figure out their formula is the number of nine-one-one calls we have per year.
Yeah.
They, there's a formula they utilize, and that's how much money we get per grant. So if we get three thousand calls per year, nine-one-one calls, their formula gives us fifty-four thousand dollars a year.
So we get fifty-four thousand?
Those are nine-one-one calls. That's not cell calls. So we didn't even figure in cell calls. Once we start taking cell calls, cellphone calls, for which are now picked up by the state police, once we start receiving those calls at WestCom, that, those numbers that we're going to receive from the state are going to increase dramatically. Because not, not only are we taking those three thousand calls, we're taking multiple, multiple nine-one-one calls from cell phones.
And the majority, I mean, most people have given up their landlines, so they have cellphone calls. And, and I would say, I mean, do you have any sense of what percentage of nine-one-one calls are cellphone calls from our town?
I don't have that answer for you.
But, but right now, any money that's charged to, or that the state collects for nine-one-one cellphone calls goes to the state police, we don't get any of that.
That's correct.
But this would open the door to that.
They triangulate their, into specific areas where those calls are being taken, whether it be Chickapi or Long Meadow, and all nine-one-one calls coming in there will be transferred to the rec center.
Yeah.
And those calls will generate revenue for us as far as grants.
And those, and your sense of that, that would be a steady revenue stream?
Providing nine-one-one system stays solvent, which Stephen just explained is legislatively secured, so therefore, that money is going to be available.
Okay, great. I don't know.
Yeah, it's always nice, the hypotheticals are always fun, because they always are rosy. I never see anybody give the bad hypothetical. They just, they don't do it. I come from the real world where I watched fee legislation come into the National Park Service where they said, hey, you can start collecting fees. And the parks went out and they collected fees for two years. And then Uncle Sugar turned around, they subtracted all them fees out of their annual operating budgets, and they went back to zero. So I don't, I don't, I don't believe the funds are going to flush in, and I don't think anybody in the state is going to say, hey, we're going to make Long Meadow and Chickapi wealthy over this thing. I am much more practical, realistic, that the grants will swell up. As the revenue increases, the grants are going to swell up. It's pure economics, plus the fact that costs are going up across the Commonwealth. And I told Stephen, I was concerned, as you guys should equally be concerned for the long-term of our community, is this viably feasible fifteen years from now, based on the best information that we have? And being optimistic and saying, yeah, revenues go up, they're like, you're not going to give as much grant money, because they're, it's not, it's not the way the system's designed. I told Stephen, he got upset with me last meeting, because I call him a cheerleader, so we know the benefits of the system, there's no doubt about it. It's new to us, but it's not new to the world. I've never been in any organization since I worked professionally that didn't have central dispatching. The economy, the economy scale is there, it's a fantastic thing. The thing is, when we're converting from our little one into this big one, it's a different situation, because now there are some pitfalls in there. And I, I have to openly admit, in ten years from now, we could actually be spending, proportionally with inflation cranked in, we could actually be spending more than we are today. And I could accept that. But I have to be real in understanding that, yes, it may be that, but we're going to have a higher level of service that we don't have today. So we're actually going to be getting more, we're going to pay a little bit more. I don't, you know, I tend to look at it in a more realistic approach, is that what do we really think it's going to go? I guess the thing that scares us, and Stephen and I talked a little bit, once you get in it, you can't get out of it. You're not going back. And, and we're in, we're in for the long haul. I know it's nice to say, but in two years, that space is used, that money's reallocated, the equipment's obsolete, and you guys know that, you're professionals, and we're moving on. Once that full commitment's over there, that's it, we're there. And that's why we're trying to make the best possible decision, based on the information we got, without, without the pie in the sky, because I, I just, you guys are professionals, I don't think the pie in the sky is going to stay there. It'll eventually, it'll potentially dwine down, because if it's too good to be true, it's usually not true.
I could comment just a little?
Go ahead.
Well, I don't know.
Richard, what I really identify through this, and I manage the radio system in the community, so ten years ago, we spent three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars to put into the current system. Right now, to do a like system, what we're doing with the rec is right around, we're one-point-two, one-point-three, we're right at a million bucks.
Right.
And, you know, that's, that's a ten-year, you know, you know, it's tripling cost. You know, what's, you know, is this sustainable for us to even do this in the future, in this community? So, you know, that's one of the things, I mean, granted, probably my successor's problem, but, you know, it's, it's going to be a tough mountain to climb a few years from now.
And I think that's more the discussion that I'd like to have, or that we've had, is that there's a lot more reasons than just one dotted line that this is a good decision. There's a lot more things to put on the table. You know, when you guys look out ten, fifteen years from now, just not, not even having to manage it's worth a lot.
Yeah. Sustainability.
And, and we know the technology is going straight up. So the cost of us running a full dispatch center, even coming close to the services provided by this, are going to get less and less, I mean, more and more.
And right now, personnel-wise, we're running at four, we're utilizing four and a half personnel right now to manage our dispatch. We know once the X-gen goes into full operation, they anticipated that going into full operation last year, but now they're talking two years from now. At that time, we're going to have to utilize two dispatchers per shift in order to manage that.
Right.
Because of the complexities of technology that's being expected and being given to our dispatchers in order to manage. So we know those personnel costs are going to double what they currently are. That's not even, I didn't even put that into this formula.
Good valid point.
Yeah.
And the complexity of your calls are increasing too, with mutual aid, and I guess...
That's correct.
There's a lot of stuff going on, the whole world's moving forward.
And, and we offset some of the, the radio dispatching with fire personnel.
Right.
That should be out on, you know, that I would like to put out, but when, when things get busy, we, we work together on that, so this would eliminate that need.
Right.
Okay. You all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Richard, or Stephen?
For this moment.
Mark?
I have, I have a few questions I've written, I think you anticipated some of them, but I just want to make sure I'm clear on these. So the first one was, are current handheld systems owned by, that are owned by the schools and DPW compatible with the new system? I think you said, yes, they are.
Yep.
So we don't have to replace all, all those at once?
No.
On day one? Because we've budgeted in our operating, but I mean, I, I remember going back that the mobile units you budgeted to your department every year, a couple that you replaced, and I assume we'll continue...
Yeah, we actually, we've increased that in the past few years, so.
Okay, the, you know, I guess the, well, the other question I had, which I think you anticipated, was, does the rec plan on coverage for the, all the areas of the town, especially those with, that had the weaker coverage section? And, and your answer was yes, and I guess the question is, who owns and operates that transmission and repeating systems under the new system?
So we maintain our shift of the frequencies, they own the system.
Okay, so, so I guess the key question for me is, does the disengagement agreement offer the town, allow the town to buy out the equipment that's now being placed in the town? Or is the, you know, because some disengagement, using the, if you will, the ever-source model, you, you disengage, we pull out the equipment, now you got to go buy it? Or, you know, because that, to me, makes some difference of where we go, because I'm wanting to move toward operations. Stephen, do we get the right to buy out that equipment, or does it...
I believe there's something in there about that.
I mean, I assume it's at an appreciative value or...
Yeah, I mean, I think there's...
It's in the disagreement, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, just give me a second to pull it up here.
Well, while he's doing that, John, one of the questions that's always come up is the, the value of what I'll call somebody at the front desk. And when we first started talking about this, we talked about, you know, the ATM or a pick, has any more thought gone into, are we going to have staffing at that front desk, and what it's going to take? Is somebody going to be able to walk in there and talk to somebody who would be in Chicago for all we know, or?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, initially, what they usually call it is a dark station. Are we going to be operating a dark station, which means there's no, no one going to be there to receive walk-in complaints? I, I like to consider what we're going to be operating is a gray station. Basically, what we're going to be utilizing is staff that we currently have. Throughout the day, throughout the evening, we usually have a sergeant who is working both of those shifts, or a captain lieutenant. They have administrative responsibilities, not only in the station, but, you know, as far as supervision, as well as supervision of officers on the street. But administratively, they have those assignments. They can, they can work in the station, in the dispatch center currently now, in order to staff that. Also, we have officers frequently coming in and out of the station, typing reports, doing accident reports, doing investigation, making phone calls. They're going to be assigned to stay in that dispatch area we currently have in order to receive those calls. So although it is not going to be fully staffed twenty-four-seven, I would say a preponderance of time, there's going to be somebody in there. In any event, there is no one in there, we do have the capacity where, you know, we're going to have the monitor, which direct access to the dispatch center, and someone will be able to respond immediately. The only issue where it may be more dark than most is probably midnight day shift. I did a study, and we get very few walk-ins. Mostly, it's utilize of facilities or something.
How many staggerings do you hear?
How many what?
Staggerings.
None. They go to the fire department.
Both lobbies will be, will be video covered with, with door controls on them that can be operated remotely through the rec. So whether, and, and whether they walk into my lobby or his lobby, the person at the rec will actually be able to observe them, dispatch somebody, and there'll be, I'm not sure if we've read on, maybe the telephone or some type of intercom, where they can actually talk to the dispatcher, so that's one of the, with some door controls. We're still, we're still working out the gizmo aspects of that, so.
Another question for Chief Dearborn. We talked about the, you know, we talked a lot about capital avoidance, because, and I'll just say, I was the chair of the Capital Planning Committee ten years ago when we bought the equipment, and I remember going through this with, with the fire chief at the time, and Chief Madison talking to us about what we needed and what we thought the length of the life of it was, which was probably about where, where it sits right now. I guess the comment I would have in response to, yeah, a million dollars is a lot of money, but I don't, I think at the time, our thought was, the next time this comes around, we're going to bond it over five or eight or ten years, and, you know, we've never, we couldn't come up with a million dollars. And so the question is, what does that look like bonded over a certain number of years? And I don't have the answer to that, but it was thought of at the time, it wasn't necessarily a good answer, and it doesn't solve the problem of, it's still a million bucks.
Right. Well, I did include there that there's actually, there's two approaches to this. One is to actually purchase it, whether we bond it, you know, buy it, you know, whatever. Then there's also a thought process out there, what they call managed service agreements, basically lease agreements for this type of equipment, which more people go into electronics, because they just don't last. So, I mean, there's different ways to skin the cat with this. At the end of the day, Mark, it's going to cost you in the long run about the same amount.
Well, at the end of the day, it's going to cost somebody that amount, either it costs the town or it costs the rec. I mean, if you need the equipment, you need the equipment. But the other thing is, Chief Stankowitz, you know, you commented that a couple of years from now, we're going to clearly need to increase the size of the dispatch, but yet, the rec doesn't show that there's going to be more than one person dedicated, if you will say, dedicated to Long Meadow. Aren't they going to have the same, same issue?
As a matter of fact, we're increasing capacity. It, from what we currently have with the rec, we're going to have the one dispatcher designated for Long Meadow, but we're also going to have the supervisor, and we're also who's going to be able to fill in on a halftime basis for Long Meadow. We also can take some Chickapi, designated Chickapi dispatchers, and in peak periods of time, we can bring them over to Long Meadow Assist as well. Now, I understand what you're saying, and we are going to be able to increase, but we're not going to have to increase with the same amount of volume, same number of dispatchers as we would in Long Meadow, because...
Long Meadow, you can have one at a time, there you can have fractions of a person at a time.
Exactly.
I get that.
Yeah, so it's, it's going to go up, it's going to increase, but fractionally.
Just, just a couple other quick, quick questions about Good Time. The, I did some quick math here, and if you go out to the two thousand and twenty budget that you folks projected, that's the one that has the operating budget of three-point-two million dollars for the, the rec that shows a two-point-four million dollar subsidy. If in fact, there was no state subsidy, I believe that our seventeen-point-seven-one percent of an unsubsidized budget would be five hundred and sixty, you got the same number? Five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. So we're comparing five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars of unsubsidized to about five hundred thousand dollars if we did it internally, kind of thing.
I think you're not including the capital.
Yeah, plus, plus a million and a half a cap.
Plus the capital, right, right, right. I, I understand. I, I understand there's, there's capital involved too, just the operating budget. So even without subsidies, I mean, it's not like we're doubling the cost. I guess ultimately, and I go back to the, the last election in the city of Springfield, which is no, not necessarily the bell, the bellwether I wanna hang, hang Long Meadows' hat on necessarily, but, you know, there are people running for city council in Long Meadow and, and, and Springfield, and, and their entire campaign, you know, claim was nine-one-one calls in Springfield will be answered in Springfield. And, and I'm, I'm not sure I agree with that, other than the fact, I think it speaks to the mentality of, of people in town who, you know, would like to understand that their nine-one-one calls are being answered by somebody locally or somebody with empathy. And so I guess the question really goes to, how do we overcome that if we move in, in this? I mean, to me, i- i- if, if the level of service isn't adequate, you're gonna, I think you're gonna say something right away, and we're gonna say something, and, and the thing will blow to pieces. But how do we get over the, the emotional concern of individuals that my nine-one-one calls aren't being answered, you know, down the block here?
Mark? Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, we, so we were involved in the interview process for potential directors. We, that was one of our questions, because we have the same concern. And we had some actually really interesting answers on it. One of the folks we interviewed comes from a regional dispatches thirty-five miles away from one of the communities they dispatch. And as part of their training program, they actually send the dispatchers out that community, they do things like ride-alongs. They, you know, spend time in the fire department. When they did the transition from closing their own dispatch to actually joining with that rec, they sent the rec dispatchers to the dispatch and did some overlap time. So they learned the community. And I thought that was a great answer, and that made me actually feel a little bit about that we're not hiring somebody that, you know, we've never met, they don't know anything about Long Meadow, that they're actually, there's an investment process for the comeback, for them to come here and learn about our community. As the operations committee, and certainly to the board of directors, I would encourage that. I want these folks to be certainly familiar with my agency, certainly familiar with John's, but also familiar with Long Meadow. You know, what our makeup is, you know, some of the infrastructure here, so the dispatcher can actually have a picture of it. Will they know every street and every dingle? No. Do our dispatchers not? Do all of my new firefighters? No, there's a certain, you know, it takes years of experience. So, but I think there's a way to, maybe it's not perfect, but I think to bridge that. So I really liked those answers when they gave them, it made me feel better about it, so.
And as far as customer service, you gotta remember, this is a profession. And they, their strive for customer service, they wanna make people feel comfortable, they, their job is to extract information, to give it to the officers on the street and the firefighters that, who are responding to an emergency, so they're more capable of responding in their most appropriate way. So that's through their process of training, that they're learned to be receptive, patient, confident in the delivery of services. So this is, this is what they're trained to do, and they're professionals. And I'm confident that our supervisors, the district coordinator is gonna be able to share that information with them as well, or encourage them to do that. And if not, they have to answer to the operation chiefs, because we're not gonna stand for anything less than what we are now. I, I anticipate we're gonna see an enhanced level of service. And that's not a pie in the sky.
No, no, I, I agree. You will have an enhanced level of service.
And the other thing is.
Don't, don't think there's no trepidation from, from us on this.
Right.
I mean, sometimes you get pretty comfortable in your shoes, and even though we think we get, we can do better at what we're doing, we're pretty comfortable with what we're doing now. So, I mean, we've got a lot right, I mean, I, I realize financially, you know, that's, that's your role. Operationally, and, and our reputations, we've got a lot riding on this too, so we're putting a lot into this.
And we've spoken to, you know, we've done site visits, we've spoken to other chiefs who've gone through this process before, and there's always hiccups, I mean, initially, but it works out, it smoothes out, and in a short period of time, everybody's running on the same page and understands the process. And not one person has says that they wish they didn't get involved in this process.
And then Chief, you would say that, both chiefs, anyone who uses one of these to dial nine-one is not gonna call Springfield directly, is gonna go to the state police.
Initially, initially, until we get our operations running smoothly, we're not gonna be taking nine-one-one calls.
No, no, I mean, but right now, today, today, anyone who calls on a cell phone, goes to the state police, doesn't go to our town hall.
That's correct.
It doesn't go to our dispatchers. And, you know, so even though politicians can say, you know, we want all our calls going to town in, in Springfield, even the, the city, you know, it's a hundred and fifty thousand people, those calls, the majority of those calls, any call that goes from one of these does not go to the Springfield Police Department. And, and, and it won't unless they become part of a, a rec, you know, and then it goes to the rec, and it goes to a person specifically who was trained and delegated to this geographic area, who knows Long Meadow and knows what's going on, and, and so, you know.
But the downside of a smaller rec, if there is a downside, and I'm not sure if there is, is that the, a nine-one-one call coming from somebody in East Long Meadow could hit our tower and come to the Springfield, the, the Long Meadow Chicopee rec.
Yeah.
And, and in theory, a nine-one-one cell phone call coming from just inside Long Meadow could hit an East Long Meadow tower and still go to the, the state police, because it's such a small region. As opposed to a wider region, especially a region that had all the contiguous towns around Long Meadow, at least I could tell people, within the town of Long Meadow, you're good, because it's the people on the fringes that, that may have, have, have an issue. But now, we are the fringe. So is Chicopee at this point, when you're a smaller rec. And, and so, you know, I, I think we have to be careful of promising people all nine-one-one calls will be sent to locally town, because it's, you know, we're gonna pick, I, I assume whoever runs the towers, or whatever it is, they're gonna say, this tower goes to the rec, and this tower doesn't go to the rec. And you tell me which tower my cell phone, you know, pings off of, and, and you're gonna be better than Verizon sometimes, so.
They're pretty accurate, but there is a degree of error, margin of error.
Right, I mean, and that's why I, my concern is, was, you know, getting more surrounding towns into the rec. I don't think, I know, Stephen, you don't agree with me, but I think we've gotta move forward as if it's only gonna be Spring, Long Meadow and Chicopee forever. And if others join, fine, but if they don't, we've gotta be comfortable with a two-town rec, which is really a city and a town rec.
Right, and then, but we also do have a new cell tower going up. Stephen?
So if I can, I'll answer your question about the equipment, this is the language says, and I, and actually, I remember, I think, to be honest, I think I came up with this, the equipment purchased by the district and being used by with the draw, with the withdrawing community shall be returned to the district on, on or prior to the date of withdrawal, unless the board of directors approves a transfer of ownership of such equipment for sound and sufficient consideration. So we built that in as a kind of backstop for, for all of us, because at this, when this was written, all of us were still a little uncertain. And so we wrote that in as kind of a backstop in case it didn't work out, and then you don't have a town, you know, even as a group of communities, we didn't wanna leave a town in a position where they could not dispatch calls. So that's what the language says on the equipment. So I guess when you talk about, because you just made the, the comment about, I forget how you just said it, but about level of certainty. You know, if I can just kind of encapsulate that, for the board's benefit, but also for, for those at home, and I'm actually talking about a specific person hopefully watching at home right now, enhanced service, the ability to provide a higher level of, of enhanced current service, enhanced with the current service, and that's what the, mostly the extra half a dispatcher. You're gonna have the ability to provide services we don't currently provide, which is to sell calls, and then very soon, next gen, and they say next gen, that means can somebody text in an emergency call, or can I, hey, I just videotaped this guy, you know, shooting someone, can I, I'm gonna send that to the dispatcher. So we'll be able to much better handle the technological costs, the capital costs of doing that. We've got a commitment, we're basically gonna end up following the rest of the world that is, as Richard noted, noted, does centralize, it's either Texas or California.
California.
Has five.
Five dispatches.
The whole state.
Yeah.
So, you know, the, the, the parochialism of it is well-understood, but it's really, is the person competent? Are they well-trained? Can they read the screen in front of them that shows you where you are? Because the calls can come from anywhere, and they could go to anywhere, and still, it's like customer service, like calling, or, you know, your iPhone or something like that, you still get the level of service. And based on the, on the most recent, most accurate numbers we have, over the next five years, as we roll into this thing, between capital and operating, we're gonna save about three million dollars. So, you know, that seems like a pretty good deal to me.
This isn't a rebuttal, Stephen. I think the, the concern that I have, it has, you know, the cost is, from, from day one, we thought it was pretty good, and, and, you know, and, and even now, when I'm doing the math here on, even if we lose state subsidy, once the equipment's in there, it's, it's not like, you know, it's killing us. You know, the, the concern is, we've got the city of Chicopee and the town of Long Meadow as equal partners in a rec. And then you look at the agreement that says there's gonna be, you know, four or five or six dispatchers for Chicopee, and one dispatcher, or maybe two, the town of Long Meadow, and you're saying, you know, we know who pays these bills. You know, I, I mean, if I'm the director of the rec, I know I report to the board of directors, but, you know, I, I'm getting, especially because of the city of Chicopee, I don't want to align them, but they, you know, on a Saturday night, they're, they're getting a whole lot more calls from Chicopee than they are from this, from the town of Long Meadow. And the people in the town of Long Meadow wanna make sure that everybody's not running over, taking care of Chicopee, and there's, that's the, that's the crux of the matter, Stephen.
So I am, so I am. I am gonna rebut that, because we've talked about that a whole bunch here.
But it's still a concern.
They, I understand it's a concern, but all the research and information we presented should mollify that concern, and I think the most recent example I gave you was we went to go, it's a little bit different in that it's a host arrangement with the city of Worcester and the town of Lester, who are even more disparate in terms of size, population, call volume than Long Meadow and Chicopee. And the Lester chief loves the arrangement. And I think that what, what you highlighted as a concern should really be seen as for a lot, I hope we nobody from Chicopee's watching this meeting right now, we get fifty percent, we get fifty percent of the say in all of it, but we're only responsible for seventeen percent of the, the, the share. That's, that's another part of it, that's another good deal.
Tom? Tom? Yes, Richard?
State of California, five dispatch centers, don't need to say anymore.
Yeah.
I mean, look at the size of cities, they're all cared for.
Yeah.
It's seamless. Once it's in operation, it's seamless. You won't know if, what's, it's just, I understand your concern, Mark, but it, it's already proven itself that it's, it's not an issue out in the real world.
All right. I think.
Questions, concerns?
Call a question if there's a question.
Okay. So we're good?
It was just a discussion.
I think we're good, we got everything, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice presentation, as usual.
Thank you.
Bringing up the ladies?
I believe we are ready for the next item of the agenda, which is the.
Energy and sustainability.
Energy Committee amended, mission composition.
Solid waste. We have solid waste.
Or solid waste, that new business?
I'm on the energy committee.
Vote on the energy committee amended mission. So we, we got a amended mission statement that we're gonna discuss, right? Step right up.
Do you wanna, I mean, this is Marie's thing, I don't know if you wanna wait till she gets back, or just go ahead with it?
Oh, Liz has been here all night, what the heck, we'll do it now.
Yeah, no, Liz.
I'm not sure if I can answer.
Yeah.
I'll try.
Yes, please, just introduce yourself for the folks on TV.
I'm Elizabeth Circle, Energy Committee.
A lot of energy.
Energy and Sustainability Committee.
Yes.
So, you wanna summarize the changes in the mission statement?
I think, basically, we wanted to change the composition of the members.
Okay.
And we also wanted to add some language of the mission that we like to be leading for our town.
Okay. Yes.
So I, we've all gotten the, sent to us the old one and the new one, and I, I guess, Liz, if I was to comment on it, I'd say, why were you so tentative in, and, and I assume that the energy committee kinda drew up this thing, in terms of taking over by, you know, in terms of prioritize, I, you know, my comment was that I think the committee should be more aggressive in, in, in proposing by prioritizing and vetting proposals and then managing those projects. I, you know, I, I guess I would see the energy committee as our building committee for non-building, for energy projects. And, and, and I only say that because if you're gonna do it, you might as well do it, and, you know, as opposed to just say, well, because we really do, I, I think, and, you know, I, I think we got some, some, some good comments. I, you know, was talking to Dave Horowitz at Park Committee, you know, I said, what, what do you do? And he said, you know, we're influencers and we, we, and I, and I think that's the, the right answer. Anyway, I, my comment is it doesn't go far enough. I, I thought it was great, but I'd love to see you folks take over and say, hey, you know, we're looking at the big picture, and we know how much money there is from green communities, and here's where we think, select for you ought to be spending it, and we'll be glad to help, you know, be the advising consent to those spending.
Right. I, I would say, I agree with you, and I think that it, it would be more of a collaboration with Stephen, because he does, he does a lot of work with the green communities, and he's in charge of grants and things like that. So we don't want to, I don't wanna say step on his toes with that, but we'd like to collaborate with him on those steps, and, and be kind of a advisory in looking for where our town should be going for energy projects, and, and, because we have a lot of people connected in the community of, and we also see what's happening to the planet, so, I guess, I don't know.
Okay. Stephen?
Richard.
Yeah.
Four bites, four bites. I, I agree, I agree with Stephen, let the record show. I think we should table the discussion on this until Marie's back. I mean, Marie is the representative of this board on the energy committee, and to have this discussion without her here, I think it's, it's inappropriate. So I, I'd like to put a motion on the table, we suspend discussion table until Marie is able to attend at our next meeting and bring the issue back up to that point.
Okay, we have a second for the motion to suspend discussion?
Can I, can I just say something? We have a meeting coming up, so I can take those suggestions back to our meeting and work with Marie, maybe adding some language, if you have any.
Bring a couple of alternatives?
Alternatives, yes.
Yeah, I'm fine with you. Okay, I'll second Richard's motion.
Okay, we have a second motion. If there's any further discussion.
Just one discussion point, Tom.
Pardon?
I just wanna note that for everyone's benefit, mostly the community's benefit, that tabling the discussion about the mission statement and role responsibility document doesn't mean that the work with the energy committee stops. I mean, we're, we've been doing building assessments that, that they've recommended, I mean, I think we're, so I don't want people to think that we're not gonna do anything on energy efficiency, we do collaborate quite a bit, and that's, that is completely separate from what we're doing here. This is more of a, a revision of the mission statement for the, for the group.
The, the motion was table it until, until next meeting.
Okay.
Which is in two weeks.
Any other comments on moving to the next meeting? Okay. Well, we'll take a vote, all those in favor of tabling this till the next meeting, all right? Well, Liz, thanks for coming in, and I guess we'll see you again soon.
Can we move on to Waste Management?
But you can stay around for the-
Please.
The next phase.
Are we going Waste Management chief?
Well, we're, go to the new, new business, we could talk about solid waste discussions, that's what we're talking about, right? So that would be-
Is it too late to talk about trash?
No, 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 it's, we're moving, I mean, we can, these guys are, the meeting's running on these guys, but that's fine, we can go right to solid waste.
That's true, they've been waiting too.
Now, we can, the solid waste is actually going to be a very brief discussion.
Let's go.
Yeah, yeah. I would support that.
I thought you guys were just waiting.
All right.
Stay at the end.
So, solid waste discussion, you sent us some information on sort of research you want to do?
Well, just to re, what we want to do is bring up the snuff, snuff about some issues going on with our current program, and sort of review again where we, where we've been with the program. And when I say current program, remember, we, in, in the early eighties, before most of it was in Longmeadow, we had unlimited trash, like many communities did, and then once the cost of disposal went up and all, and the regulations came in and landfills closed, communities took more, more aggressive actions to manage their, their waste. So Longmeadow, after it being recommended for many years prior to that, its adoption, in 2006, the Selectmen in Longmeadow adopted a waste reduction program, and that's the current curbside program we have now, where we have the 135 gallon barrel or bag weekly per household, and the overflow bags for excess trash, unlimited recycling. Now, that program was designed, just so we can all remember, based on state of Massachusetts best, the DEP best practices for managing solid waste. The idea is, you treat solid waste a little bit like a utility, but in this case, in this, in this utility, you're getting, as part of your tax base, a, what's considered an average and reasonable amount of trash included in, weekly, which is included in your tax base, that's the 35 gallon barrel, or no more than 40 pounds, that's included in the tax base. So those are people who are judicious about recycling and managing their waste, composting, and reusing, and that sort of thing, can manage pretty close, most people can manage within that 35, most families, within that 35 barrel, 40 gallon a week. Those who are less judicious and might want to recycle, or do whatever, I have words for them, which I won't use on TV, but they have the overflow bags, so you can have as much trash as you want, but if you want to produce more, if you produce more trash and are less judicious, you just pay for more. So I'm not paying for her trash, and she's not paying for mine, and together we work to save the community money. Well, since we've adopt, adapt, adopted that program in 2016, it's, it's really kind of impressive. We've saved, we've reduced our trash, trash from the baseline year of 2006, each year going forward by over about 15,000, 15 and a half thousand tons. We've saved the community over a million dollars in disposal costs, and don't forget, disposal costs are going up and down, we can't predict that, we can predict pretty much going up over the years. And in recycling, we've received money for our recycling efforts, because we've increased our recycling efforts through that program, we've received over $500,000 over those years for our recycling money. And then the bag money, which is the excess, the people paying, using the blue bags, we've received about $500,000 in those years from the bag revenue. So about $2 million has been positive cash flow to the community as a result of this waste reduction program. Now, what's happened over the years, and the reason the Recycling Commission, the DPW and Stephen are talking about this, is it's been some, some creeping of the barrel size. And this year, the Recycling Commission has taken on a couple of themes that we're working on in terms of education, one is, don't put, don't use plastic, put plastic bags in your recycling, the other is composting, that's a good way to reduce your waste, but the other is the barrel size, you have to take into account your barrel size. So where Stephen and I have a 35 gallon, I'm sure Liz-
I do.
35 gallon barrel, if, if you drive around town, there are, there are various sizes barrels, and we don't have a uniform barrel program. And so Home Depot sells a very nice looking barrel with an orange handle, which maybe many of you can notice as you drive around town, and that's 45 gallons, actually. And then there are the barrels that are 50 gallons, that look similar, but they're a little bit bigger, and there, there are 35 gallon, I mean, there, so there's been a discussion internally about, well, we did try to do some, we're doing some enforcement, and some, getting some pushback from residents on the enforcement. The regulations say that if your, if your waste is, the barrel's too big, or you have too much trash, some people cone their trash, so they have 35 gallon barrel, and they put another bag on top of that barrel, well, that bag should be tagged and left, and if it's a, if it's a, if it's a 50 gallon barrel, the, the barrel should be, we should give a notice and say, this is unacceptable, and then we should tag it and leave the barrel, so, it gets a little antsy. So what we're doing now is, we're trying to bring the program back to where it ought to be, and that's the 35 gallon, gallon limit. And we did some math, we did some conversation, we did some driving around, and we had some internal disagreement about how bad the problem is, or good the problem is. And if you, if it was 30 percent of the communities have a barrel that's 45 or 50 gallons, conservatively, I guess, that's 10 pounds more a week for those households, it could be costing the town about $31,000 more a year, just in that, that's outside the realm of the program. If it were 50 percent, like some people claim, it would be more than $52,000 a year extra in disposal costs. And that's at 72.50, and we're, I'm unhappy with 72.50 a ton, but I would tell you, it's not going down, not in the near future. So, what, internally, we've just, we've been angsty about this, and we just wanted to inform you sort of where we are with it, and this comes through your survey, which is sort of a word that we, it's proper. So what we've, what we've done is, we've going to contract with Waste Management, so, so our internal data is accurate before we make a plan, and the question is, what is the real size of the barrels out there? So this, we're going to go around town, and they're going to, they're going to document my house, your ha, your house, and they're going to, you know, how many barrels are, you know, each house, is it 35, is it 40, is it, well, not 40, 35, 45, if you take my, my changes, 50, 64 gallons, whatever it is, and maybe do the same with the recycling. So at the end of the day, we can see how big the problem is, or how small the problem is, so then we can decide what's the best way to address it, to bring the community back into compliance with the intent of the program. And, Ed, anything you want.
No, I think you did a good job.
That's all right.
So, questions here?
I mean, the intent of the program, it's, it's really, it's a great, in my opinion, it's a really great program, because it's fair and reasonable, it's not draconian, where every bag, every, every piece of trash has to be, and it pays you throw bag, which is some-
Some communities.
Yeah, some communities do. It's sort of a compromise politically and economically, where some of the burden is paid by the, shared across the community with the tax base, and then excess trash is allowed, but then you pay for that yourself, so. We just want you to know that these guys are going to start going out doing this work soon, whenever the survey's-
Yeah, we have to nail that down and get it back to them, in the next, next four weeks, I would say.
Yeah.
It's a two-week cycle.
Yeah.
And if I could just build on Arlene's presentation a little bit, because she, we've been going back and forth a little bit, not back and forth like point, counterpoint, but we, along with the DPW and Waste Management, have had kind of a dialogue about this, because it affects Waste Management as well, because they go out and they have, you know, resource allocation based on our system that we have presented, not what people are throwing away, and that throws off their-
How many times they have to empty the truck?
Right, yeah, all that stuff, and, and they are an amazingly data-driven organization, which is one of the reasons why we are contracting with them to collect the data. But, you know, the, the big thing is, we wanted to step up enforcement, and we, and when we enforced the 90 gallon toilers, which are those giant barrels, we got, and that's almost three times the size of what the bylaw allows, we got significant pushback from the community, and it was, it was hard on DPW employees, especially the administrative employees that answer the phone when angry residents call, because their barrel is a tannic on it. We wanted to minimize that impact while still pushing forward what we think is the right thing, with fulfilling our bylaw, what's right for the system. I think where we disagreed was, I and Mario Mazza-
Well, your neighborhood is curbing.
In my neighborhood, it's like 90 percent have barrels greater than 35 gallons.
It is 90, I walked it.
Yeah, so I walked in, and I was like, whoa, just, and I think anecdotally, the number is far greater than 50 percent, and I don't think everybody throws away, they may not throw away more than 35 gallons of trash, but they have a container that doesn't meet the bylaw, the bylaw is specific, it's about the size of the barrel.
Well, that's the incentive bias, it's, it's, the idea is, if it's, if it's bigger, you're going to, you know, you get lazy.
You're going to fill it more, you know, eventually it'll creep up, and I think that we need to develop some policy options that are saleable to the community, but also manage our costs, because if the numbers, in terms of barrels that exceed the 35 gallon limit, it is going to add a lot more cost to everybody else's system, that's one of the things we want to kind of get our hand on, we need some data to do that. The other thing is, that I didn't mention, is we do not have a single stream system for recycling, and that's one of the things that people say, what about a single stream? The recycling markets right now are terrible, and one of the ways Longmeadow's been able to withstand those market fluctuations, and not get hit as hard as other communities who now have to pay to get rid of recycling, is the, the separation-
The dual stream.
The dual stream separation, that makes our recyclables actually more valuable, and don't need to be touched and handled and separated. So that's one thing that I want to commend, Arlene and the, and the Recycling Committee for continuing to push for. But, you know, it's, this is like a, this is a sneaky issue, it's one of those things where if we make a change, people are going to get pretty upset about it, and you're going to start getting calls and emails, but it is something that really needs to be looked at, because it does have meaningful cost impacts.
Okay. Now, as I looked at this, I mean, I, that, it would be $1,300, well, $1,400 to do this survey? 1,400?
To collect the data, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's basically their time to collect the data.
They're not asking for us for the money, though. I mean, I assume we've got money to pay for this somewhere.
We're paying them for that.
Yeah, but you're not coming to select this for the money.
No, no, we're just letting you know what we're doing.
Yeah, we just-
We're going forward with this, we're just telling you this is what's happening, and it's-
People might ask you why somebody's standing in front of the house writing something down, we want you to know that they're going around, they're going around town, and they're going to stop at, how his houses-
And they're going to check every house?
Well, they're going to look at the barrel size. And you know, it's interesting, it's not any, it's, it's not easy to, I think I can tell, he doesn't think I can tell, driving around, driving around town, but some barrels don't have any number on them, only when you buy the barrel and it has a sticker on it, and once the sticker comes off, some of them don't have the gallon size on the barrel. So rest, some residents are completely innocent about this-
Yeah.
-violation, and may not even be aware of it. And what I've learned very clearly in Stephen's neighborhood, because it's like a big gigantic circle, is that, it's a big circle, it's a big circle, is that it's a neighborhood thing. I mean, somebody went out and bought a barrel, and everybody said, oh, that's a kind of a neat-looking barrel, where'd you get that? Well, I went to, and I got that barrel. So, most of the barrels are the same, except for his, and-
Mine came with my, I think it's, mine came with my house.
Came in the house.
So I just kept using it.
But another neighborhood's like mine, where they look at me and I go around, it's more uniform to the, to the, to the right, and probably Liz's, so it's, it's a neighborhood thing.
Yeah, well, actually, I'm not done, if you don't mind. So, I, well, he, he has plenty of time to talk, don't worry about it. So, well, I think that, when, you know, I've done a lot of data collections, and you don't need to collect data on every, you know, all 1,500 people, you know, I mean, you don't have to collect data on every point.
5,500 homes.
I mean, you really just have to get a representative sample, and they really can inform you on what's probably going on. I mean, if you, if you collected from a few hundred homes, and you, and you would say, you know, 60 percent of them have the wrong-sized barrel, then you, you know, you don't have to go to every home, and so I guess one thing would be, I think-
Well, what we're trying to do is, is build, I think, for your, for your sake, is, I, I don't need any convincing, but for some other people's sake, that when, depending on the type of enforcement, and how we approach that, as Stephen said, you're going to, you're going to get the phone calls, as, as will we probably, and will DPW certainly, so-
I think, yeah.
People are passionate about, you know, this, and some people think they have the right to throw everything away, I mean, it's a different generation, and the reason, and part of it is our fault, because, you know, we adopted this in 2006, and there was a lot of press, a lot of conversation, it was a big deal back in 2006. People, now that are moving in, have sort of forgotten that, so the Recycling Commission with DPW has, has developed a newcomer's packet, and so when the people sign up for their water connection, they get a packet now about solid waste, and how to do, so it's no surprise, this is the regulation, this is the rule, this is the way we do it, and we're trying to work it-
Yeah.
...from all different angles.
I, I guess, you know, what, if, we, we should subsidize what we want to get more of, and if we want more people using these 35 gallon baskets, we'd be better off using this $1,300 to give people a discount, I go on buying a new garbage can-
What we're looking at.
That would be $35,000, because you, you know, you, instead of a disciplinary approach, you're, you're looking in a way to encourage people and subsidize, you know, and that's why I would say that, and I think the other thing, too, is that when we look at, you know, I mean, I'm old enough now, I've seen my trash change over the years, you know, I know how much I, I threw away when I was a young person, doing a lot of reconstruction of my house, and, and when, then when I had a lot of children, and, and now, and I, my garbage can probably hasn't changed size, but I sure don't put as much in it. And so that's the other side, too, is that the size of the container isn't always accurate, and as we look at a town that, you know, we've just heard, you know, at our last town meeting, we have a, a population of aging people that are increasing, I mean, you know, our trash, the amount of trash going in the system could be a lot less, because people who are, have no children in the house anymore, and their houses are pretty much set, aren't going to, so I mean, I, I think it's, it's good to promote it, I, you know, I know any time that I have gone over the limit, Waste Management's been sure to let me know, put a sticker, they don't take my, they say, this is too heavy.
Okay.
So I don't think that they're failing in their duties to uphold the bylaw, but I guess I'd rather see more of a, you know, encouragement, you know, for people to get smaller baskets than, you know, all kinds of stickers and regulations, and, you know, like the, you know, because I know people who have had arguments and conflicts with the, with their trash, and I'm thinking, these are professional people who have, you know, they're, they're making good money, they're, you know, the last thing they should be worried about is their trash, and they are talking about how angry they are about their trash pickup, you know, with the garbage service, not specifically, but this would just be another thing that would trigger people.
That's why, that's why we're talking to you. And we, I think the Recycling Commission agrees, we'd like a, we'd like a big education campaign to help mitigate all that, have people voluntarily go down to the right-sized barrel, and we just, we just want to bring it to your attention, we're trying to, that this is, is an issue out there, we're working on it, we're committed to it, and-
Okay.
Who's compiling the data, the folks or him folks?
We'll be collecting, Waste Management's compiling it all, and they'll be giving-
They're going to give a stack of 5,500 pieces of paper to somebody?
No, no, it, I think we're going to try and do it electronically.
Okay.
And ideally, they're going to have a ta, a pa-
That'd be great, a tablet.
Electronically, we haven't sorted all the decent Waste Management, but that's basically what we want to do, and then we'll collect it, and then we'll take the data, and we'll get our mini-group back together and talk a little further, and I guess-
No, that's all I want to-
And just, and I don't want to bleat with the conversation, but to Tom's point, only, only were it so that we could use that kind of approach and be effective in enforcing our campaign, I think we'd prefer to do that, too, the carrot versus the stick, but what we have found is, you know, you can go door-to-door with carrots, and people are still going to blow you off, and do it, and do the thing that isn't compliant, and so you need to have some level of, of enforcement. And on the data collection, while I think if we were doing a survey, you know, you obviously want as good a sample as you can get, but it doesn't, because we're not knocking on any doors, we're asking people questions, it doesn't cost us really all that much to collect 100 percent data, so when we talk about the 100 percent effect, we, we know we're not, we're not guessing at a percentage, so.
And the other thing about the data is, is it may show us that, you know, precinct B is much worse than, than A, A and D, and we could maybe focus efforts, you know, we might be able to target-
I'd be interested to see if that backs up your neighborhood theory, Arlene.
It's, it's like the measles, I'm telling you. We've been through this a long time.
That's a beer bet, a beer bet.
A beer.
A beer bet.
I don't believe beer.
A wine bet, we'll do a wine, that, that's, that's a bet, because I think that'd be interesting for now, but if all of a sudden it was neighborhood bet.
Yeah, yeah. So, thank you, and we'll be back, we'll, we'll keep you in the loop.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. And so, now our Officer Masafaro, or Sergeant, Sergeant Masafaro, and Chief Stankowitz, the walking school-
No, I'm sure it's-
You know, we talked about the walking school bus last year, and I just commented how, I think that's such an exciting program, and I just hope, was, if part of this is that you would film some of that, they should put it on TV.
We've had the media out at two of our walking school bus-
Oh, great.
-programs, the, the International Walking School Bus Program, which was, took place Programs. The International Walking School Bus Program, which took place on October 4th this past school year, that's where we had Chief Stankowitz, Town Manager Steven Crane, our Superintendent out, officers from the department walking all three schools. So that kind of kicked off the idea of the walking school bus. And then each month after that, I would set up a time with the three principals from the elementary schools, and we would do the walking school bus during that. So our first one was Wolf Swamp on October 31st, followed by Center in November, and then Blueberry right after that one. Between all three of them, we approximately had 140 kids. And it carried into the winter, and even the winter months, we'd probably average, each school would probably average about 50 kids. Two of them were canceled because of weather, so you can't, you know, can't predict the weather. But with that, I felt the program was such a success. And the Commonwealth had three designated dates every single year for this. So I said, well, why can't Long Meadow have two designated dates that will carry on whoever takes my position and whoever replaces our principals? At least twice a year, this walking school bus will continue, and the kids from the elementary schools can walk together. So our point of our walking school bus is to promote exercise, camaraderie. It reduces our car lines at the schools. I mean, our elementary schools are unique that they're situated in communities. So by having these walking school buses, it reduces the kids being dropped off and picked up, you know, which goes along too with the town's green energy commitment. So, so the two dates that I had proposed and have been accepted by the Superintendent's Office is the third Tuesday of September, and then with a great suggestion by our Town Manager, the last Friday in April, which is Arbor Day. So it gets us out, out of the winter into the spring. And our Superintendent has accepted those two dates, and will be permanently put on the school calendar for years to come, so.
So it's great. I mean, you know, you described the program, but you missed, one of the things that I think, for me personally, is it really important, and I mentioned it here before, is that, you know, a lot of times, children, the first time they see police officers, you know, someone says, yeah, if you don't behave yourself, that's the guy who's gonna take you away. And that's like one of the worst ways for children to be exposed to safety officers, you know, to police, people who are there to help them. And I think that this is one of the best ways for children to be exposed to police officers on the first time, is to have them walk by their house with them and walk to the school. I mean, that is, to me, you know, you couldn't ask for a better way for officers to interact with the youth of our, of our community. And so I commend you for the work you've done to have this to happen.
Thank you.
Yes.
Why only two days a year? I mean, it sounds like such a great program. And I don't mean to create more work, but it seemed like, you know, let's do it once a month or twice a month when the weather's good or whatever.
No, once a month, we are gonna do it. But I just wanted two permanent days on the calendar where the schools, we have, you know, because the Commonwealth has the International Walk to School Day, which is in October, and they have the Winter Walk to Do, Walk to School Day, which is in March, and then they have the Massachusetts Walk to School Day, which is in May. So those three days are already in the calendar for the Commonwealth. So I wanted two permanent days that we could have as a town that will do. But every month, we'll be doing the walking school bus, weather permitted, you know, so throughout the school year. So I have two more dates coming up for the month of June with Blueberry and Wolf Swamp, and still waiting here from Center School for the end of the year, our last walk to school. So it's, so no, every month, we will be doing a walking school bus. I just wanted two dates permanently on the calendar that we could have our own Long Meadow Walk to School, instead of being dictated by the state when they have a kind of a community walk. So I thought it'd be a nice, nice gesture.
Now, is it appropriate to move that we designate the third Tuesday in September and the last Friday in April as Long Meadow Walk to School Days?
Okay.
Second.
Seconded, okay. Any further discussion? Did you want any comments, Stephen?
Well, I just kind of reinforced what Carl said about, you know, one of the things that, we do it on an ongoing basis, but when you make a big deal out of it, it gets people to break their habit of getting in a car line or, you know, basically dropping the kid off to school. And the second date is, to me, the important, because in September, it's nice out, and people like walking to school. And I think one of the reasons why we want to look, you know, in the earlier springtime, is the weather's starting to turn. And if you have another big event, it'll break that habit of people who generally probably drive and get dropped off more during the wintertime. It gets them out walking again, reminding them that it's fun to walk to school. And I want to commend Sergeant Masafaro and Chief Stankowitz for putting this together. It is a big success. It does have meaningful impacts on our quality of life, and I think it's gonna grow even more.
I can't take credit for this. Sergeant Masafaro came up with the idea of doing this, and it's really gained some momentum. Also, what this has done is, we've been able to work more closely with the schools. So he's got this relationship with the elementary school principals, and they send a message out there, as well as the Superintendent. So it enhances our relationship with the schools as well.
The state recognizes it, too.
And I gotta commend Mario, too. It's like, DPW's doing a great job with these sidewalks. I mean, we wouldn't be doing this if we didn't have a good infrastructure out there. We need to keep pushing to maintain our sidewalks as well. So let's utilize them, and that's what we're trying to do.
And just for my closing, the state recognizes it. Every year, the state, Massachusetts Safe Roots of School gives out awards for communities that do practice safe routes, bicycle safety. We do Halloween safety, the walking school bus. And last year, only Blueberry Hill School got the gold award. So the Commonwealth has broken up into Central and Western Mass as one group. And this year, all three of our elementary schools received the gold award on safe routes. So I think it's a great accomplishment for the town to go from one school to three for that award, so.
Mm-hmm. Very good. Great. Okay, so we'll take a vote. All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. And now we.
I'll make a motion, we approve the special town meeting article submission memo.
Second.
Okay. And we could just take a look at the memo. Paul, do you want to just remind us of the dates that you have there?
Well, we have a special town meeting that's already been set for October 16th, working backwards in order that the warrant articles get before you folks in the time we matter. And there's ample time to review them and go through questions, working with the schedules that you also have for the October and September Select Board meetings. We came up with a date, or actually Deb proposed this, and I fully agree with it, to have the articles come into the Select Board's office no later than noon on August 27th. And that would also hold true for citizens petitions. That would give us ample time to get everything before you start the process. And you folks have ample time to prepare the warrant articles, per se.
Tom, can I just ask a couple of things? One is, because we don't have to publish the full town meeting warrant like we do spring town meeting, I'm wondering if that was taken into account with, this seems, I mean, August, people are just coming back. It's before Labor Day, I think. So the other thing is, if we're gonna do this to the town residents, I would like to see if we can't also do it for the town itself, for our warrant articles. We seem to never be able to meet our, meet our closing date. I'd love to be able to close the warrant on August 27th and keep it closed and not have to keep opening up, which means it puts just as much pressure, Stephen, on your office as it does on citizens to get all these things. And I don't, even though it's potentially on the list for September.
Why?
Well, if we're gonna continue to open and close the warrant, then why are we telling citizens they've got to have them in by August 27th? I mean, the question was, you know, we send out this note because we want them in so we can go through it. If we're saying, we're still gonna be reviewing them on our, and I don't know what the date is, October 3rd or 4th, you know, Select Board meeting, and there may even be one on the, I think, based on the date, it's October 1st and October 15th, you know, do we really, and we're still gonna be reviewing ours potentially as late as the 1st, why are we telling citizens they got to have them in, in August?
I don't think we open and close the warrant. I mean, that was a past practice that we no longer do. The warrant stays open, but for citizens petitions. And, you know, there are times where we're waiting on information right up until the last minute of things that may be priorities for the board. And I think it's worse to say, we're gonna hold ourselves to the same deadline, and then all of a sudden, something's a priority that we need funding for, or a bylaw change or something. And we're like, except for this, we're gonna wait this one in after the fact. I mean, I think, I don't know that the process needs change, but, like I said, we're always kind of, and, you know, we have vacation schedules, you know, town plays have vacation schedules during the summer, too. And I'd prefer not. Obviously, I'm gonna advocate for as much flexibility as we can.
I get it. I get it.
Yeah, this is probably the earliest that it would go out as far as notifying residents also. So it's also, we're notifying them much earlier in the process.
I hear you. The motion was to approve the memo was written. It wasn't, the others were just comments.
Yeah. And then, so hopefully this arranged, you know, is set up in a way that we'll continue to have, people have enough time to look over the items, you know, to be discussed at the town, the special town meeting, so people who are interested will attend. So we have a motion to accept this, these dates, this article submission. It's been seconded, right? Did we get, okay. So we're all ready to vote? All those in favor? Okay. Thank you, Paul, and Debbie, for setting this up. Okay, OPEB reinvestment discussion. This is something that, you know, came up earlier in the year, Paul, or a few, you know, probably a month ago. And you had talked about how, now that we are setting this up as a fund, that then we could reinvest it in different ways, and we thought we could talk more about it this morning.
Sure. Again, this all started with the Municipal Modernization Act of 2016, where they made available municipalities, districts, political subdivisions of the state could now send its money to the, to the state for investment purposes. That's where, basically, the teachers' retirement money is invested. Ironically, when we spoke about the Retirement Task Force earlier that Peter Landon was on, they made the same, they made the recommendation to send it to the exact same place at the state. So anyway, the Municipal Modernization Act opened up that door last May. The first step that we took was to re-accept the provisions of Chapter 32, Section 20, which was a re-acceptance of our OPEB trust fund, something we had done many years before that. But with the new stipulations through the, through the changes, we had to re-accept it. And then at this last town meeting, we took the final, some final steps of town meeting authorization. We get some resolutions in place about the fact that we would potentially be sending this money to the state, authorize the treasurer, who is the custodian of the funds, to be the trustee of the funds. And basically, we had to do a lot of paperwork between town meeting and just about now, got all that paperwork into the state. The state has a 90-day waiting period, but we will get our money over to the state once they've accepted all our paperwork. And that they actually do the investment for us in what is known as their PRIT Core Fund in the State Retirement Benefits Trust Fund. And basically, it's a fairly moderate-risk type of investment proposal. That's where our funds will go. We'll get a percentage share of all the $50 billion that they have invested through the different organizations. We basically have only been investing in CDs, so our rate of return, obviously, has a potential of being much greater. With a greater rate of return, it'll have an effect on our OPEB liability. It will knock that down. We can use a greater rate of return for that. And like I said, there's, once it goes to the state, there's no real decisions we have to make as far as investments. They're going to do, there's only one fund that it's gonna go into. And that's, again, as I said, that PRIT Core Fund. Is that all the paperwork is into the, into the state already, is being reviewed by their council. And I'm just waiting on the final approvals to come in there. And then, once we have our 90-day waiting period, we will begin to ship off our liquid money to the state, let our CDs that we have currently outstanding, let them mature. And then, basically, probably, I think, they all mature by January of 2019. We would basically have all our funds invested, our OPEB funds, OPEB trust funds invested at the state.
That sounds great. Is there anything that we need to do to?
There's nothing that needs to be done. I supplied some questions and answers that they put out, a little document about that. As I mentioned in the warrant article, the rate of return since inception has been over 10%, where we were garnishing maybe 1%, 1.5% in CDs. So it'll have a fairly big impact. You know, should they maintain, I would, I don't wanna say I guarantee, because, you know, they have an opportunity of losing funds because of the way they're investing. But I'm pretty confident that, over the long term, they will have a much greater return and will, you know, soften up that OPEB liability very, very quickly, just because of that investment process.
Now, at 10%, does your investment double every five years?
10% would double every seven years. It's a rule of 70. Divide any percentage by 70, and that's how many years it would take to double.
Okay, yeah. So that's pretty.
But again, that's, that's a historical perspective. We can't guarantee that going into the future. But over the long term, it's going to far outweigh investments in CDs.
Great. Good news. Thank you very much. Any questions on this? Okay.
Tom, do we need to talk about this next one, or should we defer the next one so we can do an executive session?
Okay, the budget policy and operational stabilization fund.
Yeah, those aren't time-sensitive. In fact, I was gonna pull the retiree health thing. It, truth be told, needs a little more work. So none of these are time-sensitive. I would recommend we go right to executive session.
They were also brought forward, too, by Marie, who asked about.
I was gonna recommend we wait until Marie's back on them.
Okay. So Deb, if you could just move this to our next agenda, when Deb will be here? Or when Marie will be here. Deb is always here.
Can I make a motion, we move to executive session for approval minutes and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation?
Second.
Okay.
Not to, not to.
No, 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 to return to open session.
Oh, to return to open session?
Yes.
Okay, yes, that makes sense.
If we're gonna vote.
Or vote on.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, to do an open session. I asked that question, because I was hoping I would do that, but yeah.
For litigation, okay. So.
Mark?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
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 Okay. So ladies and gentlemen, thank you for watching. We will be going into executive session, and we will be returning at a later time. I'd like to think it's gonna be soon before we run out of electricity.
We won't be coming back on TV.
We won't come back on air.
I'm sure, I'm sure Brian's in. I'm sure they're gonna get that right out of here.
All right. So, all right. So, well, thank you very much. Good night.